I'd like to call to order the special meeting of Avalon City Council to review budgets.
Okay, Mayor, so we have in front of you documents that -- let me explain what we have at our disposal and how we'd like to walk through today, and you guys can tell us if that's going to work or not work for you. First of all, we're prepared to go through everything in as much or as little detail as you would like. We've spent the last week, "we" being city staff, kind of living and breathing this thing, trying to trim where we could, trying to be more realistic with what we are going to spend between now and the end of June. That's probably the only upside to being delayed in adopting your budget is that, you know, it's easier to kind of think about what you might be spending for the rest of the year. So, the result, I'm very pleased, and then this is every department in the city was involved in this, including the city attorney's office. Everybody trimmed and looked at ways to reduce our expenditures. So, what you have in front of you, what we're calling the big sheet, on the first page is the operations budget. And you can see that with the work that we did, we are now with a modest surplus of about $240,000. On the second sheet is our, what we call our Prop 218 funds, is our sewer and saltwater. A little bit of a surprise there, but not a huge change. These funds continue to need additional revenue to back them up. They're not supporting themselves, and we're now running a deficit of about $770 for your sewer and your saltwater funds. But again, no surprises. You guys have known this for some time. We've been talking about this, and ultimately, next year, we're going to get serious about how we're going to address these funds, because it's time, because they're bleeding us, okay? So, that's the major headline. Then, we have two other documents. One is the expenditure detail, the stick sucker where this is, you know, by every department and what the recommendations for expenditures are. And then, we have the 10-year capital improvement project list, which has also been significantly revised, prioritized, and tightened up. We also have a number of other documents which we didn't distribute to all of you, because we didn't want to bury you, but if things come up and we want to talk about them, let me just kind of rattle off some of the other things we have here for us if we want to. We have an expenditure detail. We have a revenue summary. We have how we spread our contract services across funds. We have all the budgeted full-time positions across funds, so you can see where people live, as you know, from going through this over the weekend. We don't usually have just one employee who only lives in a single area. We pay for people from various different funds depending on what they're doing. There's an IT operations budget, and then there's an expenditure breakout by type. So, these are all additional documents. We have copies available. If, in the discussion, we need to refer to any of these, we have these, and we're happy to do that.
I have six or seven questions related to where people fall within the budget. So, if I could get a copy of that now, that'll save us through this process.
Why don't we, Gina, give all the council that document? This is the fiscal year 1415 budgeted positions, budgeted by fund.
It is the same as what distributed before, except the last page has where the contractors are distributed.
And I think, Gina, since we're distributing documents, I know another one that will come up. Ollie has talked about wanting to see the general, the revenue summary. So, can we also distribute that one as well?
I can't wait to get the green one.
Thank you.
Okay, so I've got that one. Thank you, Denise. Okay. All right, and it's our intent, as you can see from the department heads that are here, that as we go through the expenditure detail, each department head will be walking through what their department is doing, and here to answer questions, of course. So, would you like to first maybe start off with the big spreadsheet and just kind of walk through as to how we got to where we are now, or would you rather go to the expenditure detail? What's your pleasure?
It seems like maybe going to the detail is good, because if things change, that would change those big numbers, correct?
Yes, that's right.
Does that make sense? Cindy, Ollie?
Yep, and we do have the, a summary of the detail, too, if you like that, in the green sheet.
Okay, so we're going to start off with the expenditure detail, then? Yeah, is that good? No?
No, I'm great.
Okay, good. So, Gina, I'm going to ask if you would start walking us through, and then again, as we need folks to chime in, we will certainly do that.
And I guess my question is, we can start with general fund?
Yes, that's, that's fine.
So, if you go to page expenditure code 102.
Did we have one more copy? Oh, okay. What a team.
Okay, Gina, what?
You know, actually, we'll start with fire, 102-45.
Okay, so at the top right-hand corner, you'll see the, do you want us to watch, walk through 101-10 South?
It just seemed.
Okay, Gina, let's start with 101-10 and just go south that way, okay? Is that okay?
All right. So, 101, the first page, if you recall, we have an internal service fund. It's our administrative overhead fund, and this is 101. It charges the general fund, which is, includes fire, recreation, planning and building, community promotion. It also charges a harbor fund. It also charges a Prop 218 fund. So, that's where it gets its revenue. And the way it is set up here is you have pretty much finance, city manager's office. Some of city manager's office is charged to other funds such as successor and the sewer, the Prop 218 funds. But this is kind of the overview of basic administrative costs. And I wanted to make one comment. We are slowly moving items out of this fund into their home funds. We've moved the hearing officer that used to be here into the traffic and safety fund. So, you'll be hearing things like that as I go through. So, the first page is city council. You are actually in the overhead fund. Eventually, I would like to move you out of the overhead fund into the general fund.
A lot of people want to move us out.
And your total for this next fiscal year is $45,005.02. We, as you are aware, you received a check every month. That is included in here, as well as we take out some retirement, FICO retirement. You have membership and dues. There's council member travel. And we also distribute $15,000 a year to the animal control, Humane Society, which is your animal control.
And how come that's earmarked into council?
Because it has been. You guys love cats and dogs.
It probably was initiated by a council member years ago.
We can move it if you think it, I mean, it's, it's one of those areas where would it, I don't know.
Where would it live?
Well, we could put it in city managers'.
It would be traffic and safety, or traffic safety where code is.
We could do that.
It seems like code would be a better place for it. Maybe, maybe next year it could go there.
Okay, that's fine. Fair enough. Next year, move it.
Well, and, okay, and that's for the Humane Society. So, where is, there is somewhere here the, the Dr. Denny stuff? That's on a different line item somewhere?
That's actually in the traffic safety fund. We have missed.
Oh, that is in the.
Expenditures.
Fine, okay.
Can I ask a dumb question?
Sure.
What's ongoing?
Okay, now, thank you. I will introduce this page for you. So, we've got last year, the adopted budget amount, and then less one time. So, in that particular budget, I had a one-time column, and the assumption was we had quite a bit of money there for one-time expenditures. I removed that. In this particular page, you didn't have one-time expenditures. That, then we develop a base budget, which includes, again, everything minus the prior years' one time. And then, the base change column, that mostly has personnel changes. If there were step increases, any adjustments to PERS rates, health benefit rates, admin overhead rates as well, which I'll explain later. And you may, depending on my thought process at the time, you may have utility rate changes in this column. I tend to put that in the ongoing column, though, because that's almost permanent. It may change.
Real quick, I'm sorry, Mayor. I just, I looked at my phone, and Councilmember Sampson indicated he's going to be a little bit late about 45 minutes ago. I just haven't been paying attention to my phone. So, he is on his way. He'll probably be here now in about 10 minutes. Just want to let you know.
Okay, great, great.
And then, the one-time column is just that. It's, it's felt to be one time. And in some instances, I've put items in there just because it's something to review in the next year's budget. It really kind of stands out.
So, just a minor little thing. All of the special trainings and whatever that we get, should that not be in our expenses instead of broken out somewhere else? Like when we learn conflict of interest and finance things, and, and attorney fees for all of that, should that not be under, under this, so we can see how much we're spending for just us, our stuff?
For council-related items like.
The attorney fees.
So, it's all city attorney-based.
When all the trainings we've had, I mean, that's, I mean, we are spending that money. I don't know.
It's actually, it's actually in the city attorney page, and we have one area for admin overhead that handles that.
Right, okay.
But we can also make that change. It's fine.
Maybe now you should know how much we're spending.
Sure, right. And, and I almost concur in the sense that we're now having our, the BB&amp;K bills split out so that we know based on council member who's, who's ringing up the bill. And I think it would be good to know of our BB&amp;K expenses, what is specifically council-related or training. I think that's a good idea.
Because I'd like to see, for example, being that we've had those trainings now, we have that, we have all those boilerplates, it would seem like in the next election, maybe we can just make copies and we don't have to go to the extra expense, so then we could maybe see those fees go down. I don't know, just.
Is that easy to add in for this budget halfway through, or?
We can certainly break out what we're budgeting for the council training. That's easy. What I'm, what I'm hedging on is just the city attorney, I mean, histori, we, okay. We know after the fact what was charged. I don't, and we've only been doing it this way for about, I want to say, four or five months, I think, maybe. So, I don't know if we have good trend analysis, you know what I mean?
So, maybe it makes sense just for the trainings.
Yeah, let's do that, and then I can chew on this for next year.
And then, going forward, perhaps, because I know next year, there's going to be more training that we'll want to do, especially with, you know, the potential of floating a bond and all the other items that we're talking about, that there might be some more. So, maybe we could keep that as an ongoing line item.
Okay, we can, we can do that.
Ding, turn the page.
Any ready?
I, I, I thought, what's the $2,000 for ongoing, is what it basically was the question?
Oh, we've increased travel and training in various buckets throughout the city budget. So, and if, so it's perceived that you'll be spending that going to either league conferences, and you, some you've already spent, and it's just keeping up with that plus adding a little bit more to that.
Okay. Thank you.
The next page is treasurer page, and again, we're, it includes the stipend, the monthly stipend for the treasurer, as well as applicable taxes, membership and dues, and training and travel as well, for a total of $3,540.
I have no questions.
Turn the page.
And here's the city attorney page. And what this is, this is, again, it's still in the overhead fund. And this particular area, this $226,000, if you look at the final right-hand column, if you add the 5,000, it's $231,000. But the $226,000 also includes the time spent for those seminars we were talking about earlier. So, it's just a matter of moving, creating a bucket in your page to capture that.
I'm curious about the, there's no number in here for the city attorney's special projects.
Yes, in prior years, there was a designation for special projects. Currently, we don't have that designation. It's all included.
I think it was the Grand Prix. I think that's what it was.
And then, there will be, and then there are other attorney's fees as we wrinkle through here.
Correct, throughout all the budget.
And then, somewhere, we have a sheet that will give us the total for all of our attorney's fees.
At, at break, I'll grab that for you. Yes, I do have that.
And then, how did the $20,000 decrease come into play?
The city attorney had several decreases throughout his budget, and this is, I believe it has to do with, again, I'll have to get my cheat sheet, with the, the added special projects that we had, the bike race. We also have other areas where we capture that in the general fund. And I know overall, he had mentioned that he's seeing a trend in reducing some of that. This, this was, there was actually a far more of a decrease here, but he has recently changed it as a result of the added seminars. So, it's, 20,000 was what he felt it should be. But he did quite a bit of work on this throughout, and reduced based on the bike race, and also moving certain expense, not actually moving expenditures, but having monies available in successor to handle a lot of attorney work. And I can get you that detailed spreadsheet by fund as well, and decreasing, comparing it to last year and this year. Now, still in the.
Turn the page?
Yes, turn the page, 101-25. This is the administration fund, and we have portions of various salaries here. This is where you'll see the election, and election happens every two years, so that's removed. It's a one-time expenditure in the budget. This is where Ben's, city manager, travel and meeting expenses are located. And also, in the final line, is professional services, and we're including an assessment on records. And this assessment will be just to review how we're, how, the state of our records as it is, the preliminary steps, and for a total of $422,141.
So, like on your spreadsheet, Ben, Denise, Jordan.
Correct.
Dudley.
Yes, and the percentage to each of the accounts?
Right, yeah.
Does everybody have that sheet in front of them? Any questions on that page? Okay.
Turn the page.
101-30, again, still in the overhead fund, and this is finance. And interesting setup here, some finance items you're going to find on this page, some you're going to find on the next page. And I'm unsure of the reasoning for that or why it was originally set up that way. It appears as if the city manager's office had more control over certain contracts. But traditionally, you tend to budget all finance-related programs in a finance-related division. It isn't separated out. But you'll hear me switch hats here back and forth. So, this particular page is part of finance. So, we have monthly software charges. And this, you'll see the beginning of the final year of the Sun Guard lease agreement that we have with them, and they have a monthly increase. At the end of the year, they'll indicate, tell us what the next CPI increase is, and will most likely take it or work with them on the next stage of the growth of the city in that area. Sun Guard, prior year, a compact data conversion. We have a significant amount of prior year data on an old compact. If you were to look at it, you'd recognize an old computer. Fortunately, it's a workhorse. It's still alive. It could break down at any time. And what's on there are all the general ledger, every information, vendor information that we had prior to the current conversion. Some cities go through the process of actually converting that into the new system. It's quite a lot of work. You have to do crosswalks, especially if you have structural chart of account changes.
Right, and Sun Guard is our financial management software that we run our GL on. We've had it for about three years now, so.
Only two years out of date.
And this dollar amount that's here is really just to print out the data. And it's been used, of course, for public records requests. But once we kind of kill the compact, a lot of specific data will be gone. So, we need to review, see what we want to keep, based on our records retention policy, which our records assessment will eventually take us there to that place. This is really a very inexpensive way to house that data.
Where does the finance director live in this? Let's see, it would be on that payroll sheet.
He's Ollie.
No. Don't give away personal information. Come on.
So, the finance director lives 60% in this fund and 40% in successor. And the way we budgeted for Chris is we've got him budgeted in as a, in payroll. So, he's actually a part of the payroll system. He's not a contract pulled out. He's part of the line item detail.
Yeah, that's why I was, I didn't see.
He's a PERS member.
Oh, that's right, okay. And then, on the same page, contractual services for project manager. Who, can you just remind me who that line item represents?
That is for me.
Okay.
And it's a portion.
And you're portioned, are you on here?
Yes. And we distributed that document.
Oh, wait.
It's one page, actually, have we?
Oh.
It's the last page, right?
It's on the last page, the distribution of the account. But if you want to see the detail, it's one we haven't passed out yet.
Oh, I can get it later. I, I just, thank you for putting this in.
Excuse me, sure.
So, I have a question.
Yes.
Why can't we pay for some of these folks? The percentage of their time is out of the harbor fund.
It, it actually is. As an overhead fund, it is charging to harbor fuel dock, Prop 218 funds.
No, no, but the harbor fund. The harbor fund is in 218, and it's doing well, and so, part of Ben's salary comes out of there as well, with those finance and whatever.
Oh, you're talking about Ben's salary?
Well, Ben's and the finance directors and.
Well, it actually, a portion of that 60% in the overhead fund is charging the harbor fund. When we get to the harbor fund, I'll show you the admin charge that's there.
Okay, thank you.
Right, this is where 100% of the expenses live, so to speak, and then we allocate out to the other funds.
Okay. It's almost easier to just go to the funds, isn't it, individual funds, instead of? Because now, we're going to do, go through all these pages, and then we're going to turn and go through all those other pages, correct? Okay, I'm, I'm banking on a few more than four. Okay, the chart of accounts to me just seems so simple, and to say, this is where that, you know, the green sheet, this is what it is, and then this is where it comes from, and then we go, okay, we hack or we don't. I mean, but, but if you all want to continue this way, if this, this just seems... Go ahead, continue. It's just me. Look at the look on Denise's face. Just keep going, folks.
And it might become a little clearer how the overhead, but there is a process we need to go through to change our overhead allocation, and that's a part of one of the expenditures here, the cost allocation plan. But it is, it is complicated. It does hit other funds. There's, there are best practices which we'd like to implement.
Okay. Okay, continue.
And.
We have the next page up?
Yep. 101-35.
Dan's got a date. Keep it moving.
So, moving to general government. This is where the first line, you'll see employee benefits special for a new total of $66,000. This is where your OPEB retirement expenditures come from. So, we do pay-as-you-go to those retirees who have health insurance covered after 20 years of service. So, we pay.
Yeah, that's true, which is 20, 21 employees, or former, 21 retirees.
Wow.
What's the special department expense for $30,000?
That's a catch-all for everything. That is from office supplies to, I won't say it's all office supplies. It's, it's anything and everything that's related to admin purchases. And we've got, let's see.
I think we lowered that amount based upon our historical spending on that.
Yes, we did.
I think so that that number is right in line with what we have.
Exactly.
Spent previously.
That's a huge expense. I mean, if you have an office to play already and you have a communication, that is a large catch-all, isn't it? Or no?
It, it is, but this is for everything admin. So, and I can tell you that we're all going to be, as we start putting the data from the last six months, months from QuickBooks into the financial system, we're going to be closely monitoring that on a monthly basis. So, the fact that it's kind of stayed where it's at, at $30,000 the last few years without having the financials.
Right, right.
Can we cut it? Sure, we can definitely. And that's what we did do. We did cut it.
Yeah.
Because we'll be more aware. And, let's see.
Laundry allowance?
What?
So, we have a, a practice, and it's also in the MOUs of providing, I think, is it, Gina, remind me, is it $200 per year, per full-time employee for laundry, cleaning, uniforms, and so forth? And it's, it's been extended in the past to all employees. So, part of it, if we wanted to remove that, we certainly could do it for some that aren't, that aren't represented for, they're represented folks, we'd have to negotiate that.
And when they could.
Well, I certainly can appreciate in a situation like the public works guys, you know, they're oftentimes very greasy, you know, it takes a little extra to do the laundry. They're provided uniforms. But for regular staff, I don't understand.
This isn't necessarily doing laundry. It's a stipend that comes from the MOU.
Right.
So, it's $200 per non-public safety individual. And then, for safety, it's $1,000 a year. And for public works, 800 or so.
So, like you two would get, you would get that $200 a year to buy your uniform?
I, I receive $200 a year for laundry.
Okay.
I don't.
You don't?
I don't. He's a contract employee.
Right, but, okay.
And everybody else?
And you all do, too?
Now, is public safety, the fire department, and the harbor each get the same amount?
Yes, yes.
I think their MOU's say the same, yep.
They are? Okay.
So, I think to answer your question, there's a little bit, if we wanted to remove it for the non-represented, we, you know, we certainly could, but the others are all something we'd have to bargain for.
It's not, it's not that significant of a number, but it is certainly an unwritten benefit to the employees that I want to make sure that's recognized.
And we'll go to the body of the document under maintenance and operations.
Gina, one second.
Sure.
What about the next time we go to the MOUs, we turn into a safety bonus?
Turn the laundry benefit into a safety bonus? Help me out on this.
Come up with some criteria that, you know, however many lost hours in a year is acceptable.
Oh, yeah, okay.
And if we achieve that, it gets paid out that way.
Incentivize that a bit. We can, we can do that. We can talk about that. Again, it's something we definitely have to bargain for, of course, but, you know, we could, we can.
Of course, but you're not done with it yet, are you?
What's that?
You're not done with the MOU yet.
That's true. I know that safety is something that the associations have been interested in talking about more anyway, so that's in line with that.
Uh-oh, blank page.
No good, it wasn't just me.
It's the PDF maker.
The PDF maker, mm, okay. We can use that for scratch paper.
And this is where we hold our IT operational expenses. And so, you'll see utilities, internet. The big shift this last year was moving from a really slow three-by-three environment to a 10- to a 10-by-10. Fortunately, it coincided with a lot of upgrades that Catalina Broadband was doing islandwide. So we piggybacked on that. And that's utilities, internet. Going down to operation costs IT, included in here are our basic operation costs that are a part of the system. Our live stream, video, Qsend, our web hosting, our email, which I didn't mention last time. Our email is, we're really renting the system for a year for $5,000. So, and I just wanted you to hold on to that thought. OpenGov. OpenGov is something that we, I haven't been, been, had a great idea in bringing this in. We have it waiting for you. It's an online environment, and we're waiting to get some, the final clean data, as well as a budget into the system so that you can go online and actually see the trends over the years financially for the city. It's going to be a really wonderful thing to see, and you can also download data off of it as well. Mainland data backup, that's backing us up a final time on the mainland. We have a backup on the pier, we have a backup here, but this is for the mainland. Qsend mobile web. This is the next step in having the city's website be viewable on your smartphone. And you might have seen that some websites, if you log on your smartphone, you get a kind of a compact environment. We're still on page 10135, if you're lost.
I don't have that one page.
Yeah, we're, we're back before the blank page.
And go back home.
Back before the blank page.
35.
She, you thought we were moving on, she came back.
And then we were laundry allowance, and then we went back to the top of the page.
We're going up the list.
Okay.
You can go to different ways.
And then voice.
This one is closer to you.
Voicemail to email technology. This is to allow for city staff to get their voicemail actually in a sound wave, sound wave email. And you can actually forward it. So it makes it just a lot easier. We can do all that with our current phone system, but this way you can write texts. You could be wherever you are with your cell phone. It's really a nice thing. Most cities have this now.
So that's a thing? That's a tangible thing?
Yes, it's a software technology that we add into.
So when you leave me a voicemail, I could forward it to Gina as an email.
And also write something along with it.
Rather than having to forward the voicemail message to her phone. Wherever she's at, she could get your voicemail.
Voicemail turns into an email. Turns into writing.
Which wants to beat up Ben's response.
But it is nice for documenting things. It's really, you know, that's the problem with voicemail is that, you know, you're furiously scribbling as someone's, you know, on your machine, and then, then you gotta send it to somebody to, you know.
And also if you're on the mainland, you have your smartphone, you see it immediately.
And everybody has smartphones that works for the city?
No.
And this would just be a few individuals who would have this. I budgeted, I believe, I think for five or six, actually more than that, up to as much as 10.
Yeah.
So is it department heads?
Yes.
Department heads primarily, yep. Some other employees too. Like, for example, we have some public works employees with smartphones.
Correct.
People that have a need to take pictures and send them mostly.
I mean, so you've kind of earmarked those people, you know who they are. It's not just a randomly.
We have a mobile, we're proposing a mobile phone stipend as part of the budget. What we have now is a loosey-goosey system, partially bargained, partially not bargained, where people are basically just using their phone.
Right, okay.
And we're writing on that.
Preferred carrier Verizon?
Yes.
Verizon actually has a thing for $3 a month where they'll forward your voicemails to your tech, to your email.
Okay, we can look at that.
Just got a new phone. Chris, this button says $3 a month will forward your voicemail.
Have you, have you used it?
I do.
Okay. We can look at that, sure.
Ben, on that note, we are looking into it because our Verizon contract comes up in February, March of next year, and we have several people actually looking at that because their costs are kind of high and we're looking to reduce those down. So we've actually looked at all phones. We've kind of done part of the scrubbing and finance, who has what phone, how much we're paying, where my, the hotspots are. We've been able to get some feedback to actually cancel some of those and discontinue some lines that we found out where they were going and where we've done some scrubbing on our utilities, so, yes.
And then miscellaneous operational software for $5,000. Cindy, you'll be familiar with, insurance is budgeted in there.
Okay.
And that, and it's kind of a little catch-all for other little things like that, that potentially come up, would come up. We're looking at getting a cloud-based environment to track our insurance certificates, to make it really easy to update them and house them. As you know, as a liability, it's, it's important for us to keep our certificates and it'll stay there.
Do we, do we take our certificates and send them off to Parsac and have them confirm that it's a valid, a company that's legit and?
They look at our contracts and our insurance requirements and what's provided?
Yes.
Yep.
Is there anything else on this page you'd like to look at? And if I'm going too slow, let me know. I'm, I'm highlighting the things I know you probably want to know.
This next page is very interesting.
Okay. And this is where we kind of have a little bit of finance in here as well. So under professional services, there's Whitman Ambulance Billing Insurance, excuse me, billing for $13,500. State Controllers Report, which actually a portion is there, but it's also in the accounting and auditing section. And then also the project manager, which is myself in there as well. We've got professional services IT and I've broken this out into two sections. One is $55,000 for year-long services, just basic operational services, remote, whether it's remote or coming here and adjusting things. The $14,680, this is in addition to that. So it would be including assistance with my gov with the time card entry program, new initiatives that have been extended out. And.
And all of that is Pat Brady?
Correct.
Brady?
Correct. The next line down, accounting and auditing, this is the auditing expenditure for this next year, Brannell Duffy, Meyer Hoffman, and I placed just miscellaneous accounting there.
That was going to be my question, is it just a placeholder?
It is.
And what do you, what are your thoughts around that? What do you think is possible?
It's the timing of our auditing services. So if we initiate the next level of our contract with, if it's Meyer Hoffman, we have to do another RFP, then this money would be allocated for them to do internal, their internal control processes towards the end of the spring. It's the next phase, the next, because now we're going to be caught up. They'll be on a normal schedule.
We also don't know what other audits we may be subjected to. We've been through a lot, but it's an, it's an unknown as well.
And so that total number should be $70,000 for 20?
Yes.
Okay. You have $70,000 there.
Yes, it's $70,000, so it's 40, 50, 60, 70 total. Meyer Hoffman, Brannell Duffy, miscellaneous accounting. A total of $70,000.
Rounding.
The rounding.
It's a rounded. You didn't round in other places, so I'm not sure of you. It's $420, come on.
We'll make it up in the miscellaneous accounting. And then contractual services, this is the move I had mentioned, moving the hearing officer out of this fund into traffic and safety. And we can just let you, we can move the humane society contribution, and I think it's a great idea to move that there as well, to get out of the overhead fund. The section below, this is the computer, the equipment side of IT. And we have reduced that since you last saw it. You, you saw the $25,000 for the server, email server in-house, that was removed. And we also reduced the amount requested for various equipment. We, in, in all of that jiggering around, we added a little bit more for time card entry so that we can have certain kind of equipment at the yard to help staff enter their time card. So the total, I believe there was a question before regarding the total of IT services for this next year. It's $128,000 without the new initiatives. With the new initiatives, it's about $140,000. So it's, it's below the 150.
70 or whatever they call this.
50 was, yes, it moved up with the server a little bit. So it's been reduced below that.
And I would expect we'd always have an IT expenditure of some significance.
Right.
I think that's what we got away from here at the city when I came on board and we were 10 years behind.
Exactly.
So it's just going to be part of what you have to do every year.
Right.
And now, congratulations, you've moved out of, out of the overhead fund.
Woo!
And didn't know if you had any questions about how we calculate the overhead fund, how it impacts other funds. I can answer that anytime as we go through this. We're going into the general fund at this point, that's Fund 102. And this page is some, is a page I created this last fiscal year, non-departmental. And most general funds have an activity or a page for each department. Non-departmental is really kind of catch-all for a lot of things. It doesn't, may not have a home somewhere else, or the city manager wants to manage it in this kind of, what are called generic environment. So we've included a lot of the new items that in the past may have been included in the overhead fund. So they're all in the general fund now. And that includes the HR manager, portion of the project manager, myself, the class comp study, which we're in the process of doing, the cost allocation and fee analysis, that will be done immediately after the class comp. And that gets into the broader conversation of the overhead costs, putting that in line into best practices. So that will help us identify what it costs to support an individual and how we charge that overhead to other funds.
The, when is the class comp plan scheduled to be completed?
I believe it's at the beginning of February. It could be sooner.
Okay, and then we go out to bid on the?
Cost allocation.
Uh-huh.
We could do that sooner, so it, it's in line with that.
Okay, because I, I mean, how long does that process take to go out to bid and get somebody in? And then is it all really spent by June 30th, or does some of that carry over probably?
It'll most likely be done by June 30th. It's a four-month process.
Okay.
So if we get started now, we can have it all in line. And it's also the fee analysis as well.
Yeah, okay. Okay, when, tell me what you're talking about, fee analysis, so I understand better. You said cost allocation and fee analysis, so.
So this gets into what I was mentioning earlier about talking about the overhead fund and what's going on with it. With the class comp, there's a lot of benefits that come from that. And one of them is we're going to make sure that everybody's wearing the right hat, they're called the right thing, salary's there, exactly what they're doing, where they are. Then we take that information, we give it to a different company that's more financially based, and they interview that individual and say, how much time do you spend just say in harbor moving a moorin? At that point in time, they also ask questions about the benefits that we have. So they come with what's called a burdened rate. So what you might consider to be an hourly wage for an individual will be added to by the cost of the lights, the cost of electricity, whatever's going on at the pier, to a new burdened rate, a new hourly rate that's honestly is unrecognizable because it covers everything.
Mm-hmm.
But you get a nice book with that detailed out by person. Then the interviewer goes in to say, how long does it take you to move that moorin? They take that burdened rate and.
Okay.
Identify those processes for that, for that fee.
Mm-hmm.
Then all that information updates our fee schedule. So then our fees are revised based on the burden rate and the actual time. What happens over time, most cities do this once every five to 10 years. Good best practices, every five years, the same time you do your class comp.
And I think the bottom line is we would recover what we're actually spending.
Right, right.
That's the short way of saying that.
And are you saying no fees or anything could be increased until we do this study?
No, you, we could, we could do that. You have that authority now. It's just, this is a more thoughtful.
Right.
And then that way, when people come to you and say, hey, well, why is this raised to this? Well, actually, here, I can show you. I can walk you through exactly why we're recovering this. It's because this is the fully loaded expense.
Okay, perfect.
So we get to see the draft of that before the final one shows up?
Yeah.
In case you don't like the numbers?
Yeah. Well, no, no, yeah, absolutely. Well, to, to the mayor pro tem's point, as a policy decision, you can determine that you don't need to fully recover. You can certainly, and plenty of cities make that decision, that that's too much, that's an onerous charge, and so we're not going to completely recover the whole amount.
Okay, I was going the other direction. I'm sorry.
It will depend. It will really depend. Once you see some of the, some of the fees, some of them will not be reasonable, and you'll have to say, well, that's, you know, it's a lot of money to charge for that.
Gotcha, okay, all right.
And the laundry allowance that we touched on earlier, again, the class and comp study, that would kind of be included in that, so you can actually see what it is relative for all the employees.
Like how many shirts they dirty or?
No, no, I mean just the benefit, because you'd ask about the benefit being extended.
That's a benefit. It's an employee benefit, yeah.
Okay, continue, I'm sorry.
Supervisory training, customer service, that's a budget monies for the upcoming customer service.
Yeah, right.
As well as supervisory training that hasn't been identified yet. Do you have anything?
Well, the, the HR manager is working on that, and we're, we're trying to get supervisor training completed by the end of the year. So it's going to be all department heads and any, and any, anybody who supervises. So if you're, if you're, if you're Oren in the harbor, if you're a fire captain, you know, et cetera, everybody.
Is this done all in one group, or is this individual?
The proposal will probably be over two days, just to catch different folks. That's the thought.
Four hour, half day?
Something like that, yeah.
I think it would be beneficial to include any of the council who wants to attend?
Okay.
Or not?
I wouldn't recommend that. You know.
That's fine.
Is that going to be mandatory?
Yes, absolutely, for, for those. And, and we will also, just pulling that thread, Councilman Hernandez, if there are folks that we think in their future someday might evolve to become a supervisor, we will include them in that as well. It's not going to be a huge number of folks because we don't have that many people, as you guys know. But yeah, there's, we'll, we'll think of career ladders when, when we're, when we're doing that. I'd rather give somebody the training that might ultimately end up not needing it immediately.
Right.
You know.
Okay. The e-civics grant database, this is something that was in recreation's budget. We've moved it here. I think it was not necessarily budgeted for there ever. So we've moved it into this area. This is a database that allows you to search for relevant grants. And also, there's an opportunity here to have somebody assist you with that as well, with the grant writing if you need it, or individuals, it's extra cost, we're not paying for that at this point. We're just getting the database, but they'll also do the searches on our behalf specifically. So for $2,225.
And that's, anybody could look. So if I was in, if I was in the planning department versus the rec department and whatever?
Correct. And sales and property tax analysis, this is HDL, the two contracts for property tax and sales tax analysis. And we've got some reports that we'll be giving you shortly on the latest updates. And we've got some reports that we'll be giving you shortly on the latest updates. And...
So, there was the 25 grand person that was gonna go out there and get us the sales, is that the same guy, the, the sales tax money that we might not have been getting because people haven't been paying, is that what that is?
Well, actually, this is the reporting structure, this gives us the data of how we're doing in terms of sale tax, sales tax by company, which is actually confidential information, but it helps us with economic development. And also with property tax, we have identified successor-related property tax revenue as well as general fund-related property tax revenue.
But I think to the Mayor's question, yes, HDL does help you identify holes. You get the report and you can see what you're receiving, and then you might notice that there's some businesses that aren't showing up that you would think would show up and...
Well, what's the one, we said $25,000, and they thought we'd get the money back by the time they did all the research?
That's a sales tax, yeah. It is, but we're not actually, that's if we, we find a situation and we engage our services. So, at this point, we're looking at the data overall and identifying what area to look into.
Okay.
So, it's traditionally, most cities have these, uh, HDL for quite a while, and they work on each of these areas. Here, being, again, so unique, it's like, what industries do we look at?
Right.
There are different ways, so, we're, we're pursuing that. Records management software, this is the beginnings of the records management process. And again, this gets into the possibility of having kind of a Google-like environment to where you can look at, search for documents. We would have one on our city website, and then internally on an Intranet environment for staff. It would help us going forward with documents as we're creating them. The other part of this is looking at backlog. This is just the beginning steps, looking into getting that software.
So, this is paying for somebody's time to look into it?
This is actually software, actually purchase of the software. And this would have to go out in RFP, identify the best vendor for the city.
Is that, I mean, is that something, that's a top, that's a priority for y'all in this fiscal year?
I'd say definitely.
Ben's not speaking, sorry.
He has a smirk on his face for some reason, oh, he's laying that machine. This is, this is, this is important to you.
The records, um, management software?
Between now and the end of the year?
Yes, yes, yes. And to Denise.
Oh.
She is our, um, record steward. We, um, we have, we have liability in this area. We, we, and, and the trend, as you guys know, is towards more information and more transparency and, and, you know, I, you know, the requests are getting broader.
Right, okay.
And we need to be able to be nimble. There are, there are requirements for the timing to respond, and if you aren't able to index and, um, you're, you're in a world of hurt.
Okay, perfect.
And then, you do hire somebody to come in and go through your stuff, which stinks.
The benefit nowadays is this can be done electronically and catalogued so much easier than paper.
Right, so this is gonna help us.
Okay.
Okay. City council meeting streaming upgrade, we reduced this amount from about 15,000 to 7,500. I'm hoping we can get it for that amount, I'm confident we can. It, this basically will go, when an individual's watching online live, you'll have the ability to look at the city council agenda and stream, so you'll basically have the screen plus the agenda right next to the, the viewer. Now, if it isn't live, the individual can go to the same environment, you'll have the agenda with hyperlinks that'll take you exactly to the moment in the council meeting where that agenda item was addressed. So, this, it, you can buy fancy packages, and not so fancy, I'm thinking this is not so fancy, so, but it'll provide us what we need.
And, and, and how many people are watching this, in television land? Deadly, can you tell?
We, we do have some statistics on that so far, and it's, the, the numbers are very low.
I know.
I think there's, um, I know, I mean, probably five hits, a council meeting are myself going back to re-listen to something we've talked about or to refer to it when responding to a request. Um, so, each time somebody clicks the link to watch the video, it makes an impression, and those impressions are fairly low.
Just for streaming, that's not watching us live.
I think we have the statistics on live, too, and that number is also quite low.
I think Jordan does have, we, we can get that. And just as a suggestion to maybe move us through this process, once we make it off this page, I would recommend that we go to the page, and if you have a question, we'll, we'll go there. But otherwise, I think that we, we could be here till probably midnight.
That's what I was going... Look at Denise's, she looks the way you looked over those glasses, like...
Like, I can tell you, we, we are in the, in the detail, we are in the weeds in the 101 fund and the general fund, so, once we get through that, it's pretty fast. So, it's, these are the big expenditures right here.
I mean, I'd like to say, hold that off until we get our message board, and then everybody's watching and get more excited, and then they turn this on more, and, but, if you want to buy it sooner than later, that's fine.
You know, the reason I, I would like to see this done sooner rather than later is because we do tend to have very lengthy council meetings, and it's hard to go back, and if I'm responding to somebody, I can, you know, say, "Yes, we addressed it, it's at approximately two hours into the meeting," and then somebody's gotta go and try to figure out when we started talking about it, so...
Yeah, this way it'd be good.
I think it's a huge benefit, too.
Okay, good.
Drug-free workplace training and employee assistance program, this is something that we're bringing to the city for the first time, I believe, and that's for $5,000, it's the cost of the third-party administrator.
Just for training and stuff you said?
And this actually, um, employee assistance program is kind of a counseling situation, you get to three counseling sessions.
This is specified that we should, are required to have this according to personnel policies, however, once we roll out the random drug test policy, this will also be a component of that, for those folks that test positively, it's a resource to help them get where they need to be.
That seems awfully low for numbers.
It is.
It seemed like to me it would be more, but...
And these companies generally, this is, this is probably around what they normally charge, they don't get a lot of people going to them, and we've got a small population of employees, so it's just derived on how many you have, and there's a schedule for 59 full-time employees, that's probably about what I would think would be.
Is that fair to act right then?
Yes, this is assuming a healthy workplace.
Correct. That's what I'm just saying.
Yes, and, and it could be more once, if, if somebody comes forward with an issue, but this is getting the program in place.
That was my point. We have somebody with an issue, that 5,000, okay.
And water-related expertise, this is consortium.
This is for, um, and this was us thinking about what we would spend between now and June 30th, and this is for professional services. This is for everything from a hydrologist to participating in the consortium, to having somebody come in to tell you, you know, here's, here's a rough thumbnail for what it may cost for a reclaimed water system, to somebody telling you, here's what we think it would cost if you were going to create your own community services district. You can certainly increase this amount if you think that's not enough, but we just were trying to think realistically as to how much we might spend in this area between now and June 30th. So, we did have more in this account earlier, but, you know, we were trying to tighten everything down, and that's how we arrived at this number.
Well, I don't know, when do we do the increase and the decrease? We should have been doing this as we go along?
You can, you can make recommendations, I mean, we're in a study session, and if you'd like to see something increased or decreased, we're, we're all ears.
Okay, well, as I'd mentioned to you briefly before the meeting, is Prop 1 just passed, and so, there's gonna be moving forward, and we need to get on the bandwagon, and so, I think as a council, we need to decide quickly through that Prop 1, which, where are we going? Is it reclamation, is it decel, whatever we can do, and there's gonna need to be a study, and I think, I don't think we can waste time, so I would like to see that increased.
Okay. What, do you have a recommendation?
Sure. $100,000.
I, I would, okay, I, I don't know that you'll spend $100,000 between, but, but having understood what you're, you and I talked previously, I mean, if you'd like to double that number?
Well, at least, I'd like to put 50 grand in it.
Okay, that's fine.
An additional 30. I don't know, well, it's up to the council, but I would like to see, because consortium's gonna wanna go one way, probably. I know the reclaimed people, because those are two different, totally two different things that have to go whichever way we go, consortium, not consortium, water district, whatever. I think we need to be fast-tracking in a couple different directions, so I would like to see a decent chunk of money.
It's fine, staff, staff is happy to do that.
Well, counsel?
50 grand's fine.
You, you...
We got two for 50.
Assuming that, um, the city decides to continue with the island consortium, that contribution, that last go-around was $10,000, so...
Okay, and if we go reclaimed, that's gonna be some money to get something out.
Study for that would be probably a good chunk, and...
And if, what, if, I don't know what else we're looking in the DC...
Hydrologists to...
Yeah, so, if we could put 50 there, and that'd be, I'd feel comfortable, how about you, Joe?
How much money is there available?
Well, you're running a $246,000 surplus at this point, um, so, we had $20,000 started.
It isn't, it's a overall surplus with all the funds, but if you look at the general fund, it's, we're still overspending, but...
Okay.
So, it's, surplus is relative.
You can spend more money in this area if you so choose.
And it's affordable.
Okay, then, let's, let's start off with $50,000, I think that's a good start.
If you don't spend that amount, we can encumber some of that to the next year.
Sure.
We can revisit, you know, we'll be fast and furious with next year's budget before you know it, so we can...
See you next month.
Exactly.
Okay, well, thank you, if that works for the majority of us, that's great.
I don't think we're gonna spend it, but you can put it in there, just to put it in there.
That was, and that was our thought, that's why we put it at 20, just because we didn't think we were gonna, but, it's fine.
Does any of that money get matched from grants or government funds at all?
Well, we can certainly try that, that's, it's certainly, that would be a noble pursuit.
Yeah, that would be great if we could get somebody to double that amount for the investment.
We can check, um, I don't know, but, why not? That's, sure.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Not, not knowing exactly what all Prop 1 has to offer...
Prop 1's not this year, we got, there's money in the water fund, the concurrent one that we can get at, I don't know if planning is covered. Prop 1, Prop 1 doesn't kick in till next July, July 1st.
Oh, okay.
They just passed it, but it doesn't...
Oh, okay. Well, I, let's just keep it there, and we'll see what, what other messes we make of this budget, and then go from there.
Okay, so, we're, we're moving that to 50, and then if we need to come back and whittle it down, we will. Okay. And then, are you okay with going with the approach of calling out a question as you have it on the page versus...
Yeah.
Talking about every single item, you know?
Yeah. We're actually, good news is, we're actually through the weeds, so it'll go rather quickly from now on. Next page is 10240. And that is the sheriff, law enforcement, and this is a contract. We're budgeting a total of 1.5 million. And what you'll see in salaries and benefits, general insurance and admin overhead, this is the beginning of the overhead funds charging the general fund. So, a portion of the overhead funds hit the general fund, the harbor fund, field doc, Prop 218.
Okay.
Any questions on this page?
How much does this, is this, how many years is this contract, refresh my memory?
It's an annual contract, and they, um, meet with us each year, and they usually, and it's almost like clockwork, it's about a 3% to 5% increase every year, basically. There, but there's a committee of city managers throughout LA County that the sheriff meets with and reviews what he wants to do and, and how, and then they whittle it down, it's, it's nice, actually, they do all the work for us, and then they come up with a number.
4% would be about 6% for next year.
And one thing on your sheriff contract that I would point out to you is that you don't actually pay for Captain Federal.
We don't pay for a lot.
Yeah, it's, you know, I think it's a lot of money, but I think in the big scheme of things, especially considering liability, it's a pretty good deal. I mean, because Captain Federal is island-wide, LA County absorbs his salary.
I guess I was just trying to think, if it's 4%, that's another 60K for next year, and then how, to look at what that next chunk is, how we get the money for that next chunk.
Got it.
Okay, good. And the next page, 10245, is fire, and if Fire Chief Craig wants to come up and discuss his budget.
Or just be available for questions.
Hello, Counsel, Mike Krug, Avalon Fire Department. I don't have anything specific here, I've already sat down with Gina, so I guess I'm just available for questions if you have.
Is a reverse 911 annual?
It is, it's a one-time fee of $5,000.
Annually?
Correct.
Okay.
Does everyone know what a reverse 911 system is?
It'd be 119.
Right, exactly. And I'm sorry, there is...
Besides former fighters or fire personnel?
The clothing allowance should reflect $10,000, not 11, because we're, we're short one person, or...
Saving money as we speak.
Oh. So, you're not asking for any big equipment?
No, any new equipment that we're gonna acquire this year or is already scheduled for replacement and is covered under the line items that we've already have, we don't have anything outstanding above that.
Okay.
Actually, I take that back, we do have one new device, but I'm gonna be coming before you at the next council meeting, I have a donation for it, so, it won't be, come out of the budget.
Seems better.
And I, uh, am not at all intending to really put you on the spot here, but I had asked you a question beforehand and had said I really didn't wanna ask the question publicly until I really understood it, but I think this might, just to kinda have this on record for a lot of others to understand.
Sure.
The, the question that I posed was the, the overtime, uh, rate, or the overtime figure that you have, which is significantly decreased from last year for, um, fire services, there are specific reasons why you need to have a line item for overtime, and I was just wondering if you could explain that for the record, just so we could refer back to it.
Absolutely, we were a little above our normal overtime budget. Last year, we had a vacancy, we've since filled that vacancy, um, so the amount of time that we covered that shift was more than that was budgeted for. Because of the way our full-time staff is designated out as captains, engineers, firefighters, and there's very specific skill sets and training requirements for those folks at the full-time level. Our reserve folks do a great job, and they bring a lot of requirements and training to the table as well, but they don't have the same training, knowledge, training and experience that the full-time staff does. Obviously, we can't work short if somebody calls in sick or needs a vacation day, what have you. So, there are certain requirements that are built into that for covering overtime. Captain has to cover a captain, engineer has to cover an engineer, and on down the line.
Thanks.
And, I, take it one step further, the city, I would just like to say, the city gets a really good bang for their buck. For the full-time staff, when they're off, they're all carrying pagers. I mean, Captain Hernandez is on the job, he, he certainly remembers. The city gets all those full-time staff carrying pagers essentially free of charge. If there's a call that comes in and they respond in and they bump into an incident, they certainly get paid an overtime rate, but the amount of time that all the folks, reserve staff, full-time staff are carrying those pagers and available for recall is huge for the department, we couldn't do it any other way, we just wouldn't have enough people.
Thanks. I think you answered my other question, Ben, the administrative overhead charges, a portion that's allocated, I think I have this question on every, everybody's budget, it's all the same, it's, okay.
And, not a question so much for the chief, that additional personnel payment time, we all know what that is, and that is definitely done, what about the, the tax liability on that? Is that gonna be done, too? Or is that gonna, is there gonna be something next year?
That remains to be determined.
Okay.
It's incumbent upon the individual.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions for...
Nope.
Just one last thing, uh, the Area F Fund that you may have seen in some of the documents, is some pool of money that, Area F is Avalon, Signal Hill, and Long Beach, and we're part of Area for Disaster Management. We were the, essentially, the gatekeepers for a pool of money for the past few years for these three cities, including us. Our goal in working with the Area F people is to get that money spent and off our books. Long Beach is gonna take it back over, so hopefully this time next year, you won't even see the Area F line item, I've been working with Chris on that, so. And it should equate to some grant money for us to spend in the next year.
Great, thank you very much.
Public Works.
So, the next page is Public Works.
Dennis, you wanna come on up, just in case there's questions?
Is Dennis built into the salaries?
If you look at other personal services, what I've done, even though Dennis is a contractor, he isn't being paid like Chris is within city payroll, we, we cut a check to his company. I placed him in other personal services within the roll-up of personal line items, payroll line items, because once the interim position is completed, you're going, you'll be hiring a public works director, that money will just float up to the payroll, uh, full-time payroll salary line item.
So, huh.
So, you'll see...
He's only costing us 46,800. That's a good deal, we'll take it. You're signing up for the next year, too.
But yours...
But you're, you're split, aren't you?
Right.
Yeah, so, okay.
He looks split.
In different, different funds.
Right.
Got it.
Spends a lot of time doing sewer-related stuff and-
Yeah.
Different hats.
So on your long sheet here, it'll be public works director. General fund there, that actually is, it's called DOD, we have him spread across several funds. So that one isn't reflecting, that's reflecting when you have a full-time. But he's spread across sewer, salt, successor, and general.
So in a perfect world for staffing, would you be asking for more, if you could ask for more staff?
Yes.
And what would you need?
We could decrease some CIP, infrastructure items if we had more-
You could what?
Decrease future repairs in saltwater and sewer repairs, if we could do a lot internally.
Your capital improvement project list could diminish with, potentially with some additional full-time skilled labor, depending on what skills were hired for.
How does that balance out, cost-wise?
You're going to, you're going to pay more, they'll lease them upfront to recruit and hire. I think long-term it would be potentially fruitful, depending on what the skills were that were hired. So in other words, you wouldn't just hire, excuse me, let me rephrase this, you would want to hire somebody with cement contracting skills, someone with plumber's license. Those type of skills versus somebody who's more of a public works generalist, who might not be able to do some of the skilled trades.
Okay, and just with the current staff you have, with the work that you need to do and that needs to get done on a seven-day-a-week basis, is there even a need? I'm kind of liking what you're saying about this other deal, I mean, do you have need for other staff just to do the stuff you need to do now? Do you feel like you're on top of it enough, or, I don't know, just asking?
Right now, we're handling the maintenance issues that come up, and you know, the cleaning and things like that with current staff. There is a little more overtime than we'd like to see in present time. We have, we've lost, since I took over, we've lost two part-timers and one full-time employee. We'd like to fill those voids as soon as possible. And we're going to start training staff that, like City Council, City Manager says, to do some of these specialty repairs.
I think what we might ask, if it's okay with you, sorry to interrupt, is now that we have an HR manager on board, now that we're doing a class comp study, I'd like to see the results of the study, have the HR manager, she already is, but- Take a close look at the department and come up with some recommendations, and maybe next fiscal year, which, like we were talking about, it's going to be here before you know it, if we need to make adjustments, we could do it at that time. I would recommend between, for the balance of this year, that we stay the course of where we're at.
Really, and even with summer coming up, by the time the HR person and all of that, and then you advertise and, I mean, whatever, manage, you're the manager, but I know there's a lot of work to be done out there, and I-
Well, we, yeah, so the next fiscal year budget will start, basically, yeah, so we will, between now and then, we will be looking at his operations with the HR manager, looking at the class comp study, determining what's right. Maybe we have the wrong type of folks in some area, maybe we need to, yeah.
Okay. Wanting to be supportive.
One other question, I had just the equipment to come in, we're going, it seems to me we have a lot outdated equipment, and I'm just kind of worried, but Ben kind of hit it more than July 1st.
City Manager asked us to develop a list, we've got a bunch of-
Kind of a wish list?
Yeah, we're trying to compile some information for animal status, current inventory, and we're real close to getting it.
Right, so what we're coming up with is a comprehensive schedule listing all of our equipment, the expected remaining lifespan, any investment needs to be made, and then a prioritization for-
Priorities.
So like a true vehicle and equipment replacement schedule, so that we know, okay, next is this, and here's why, and we, versus the approach we've done previously, which was, you know, oh, I think we want this truck this year, without any real backing as to how we arrived at that.
And is it cheaper to lease something, or is it cheaper to buy?
Sometimes.
Depending on what it is or how much it is, I guess.
We're going to investigate all those options.
All those options?
Yes.
All right. I know we have a lot of outdated equipment and-
We do.
Stuff that's old, but, okay.
We had a line item, you may recall, in the last budget, $90,000 for a harbor, what was it called, Dennis, the harbor?
Van vehicle.
Right, and I just didn't feel comfortable bringing that back to you guys unless we had the schedule to back up it. I mean, maybe, maybe that is the number-one thing that we need to replace, but I just really need to see every single vehicle and heavy piece of equipment and what, what remains in it, and how much more needs to be invested before we decide that.
Correct. We're going to come up with a list real quick, we've been working hard on it, and we've got to examine each piece of equipment and vehicle as soon as we can.
We do, you'll see, as we get further through here, a replacement for a code enforcement vehicle, that is in here. It's a smaller amount. What's that?
Can't pass the noise to us.
Yeah.
But anyway, with that being said. That's good, I'm glad we're working that way. Where's our Pebble Beach Road match?
Let's see, where did we?
Pebble Beach is in 200,000 or so, is in successor.
100, 100, 100 of it is in successor.
Ongoing.
Do we put 250 in this year?
From the tax, the original, it was 250,000, we're still waiting to see what exactly is available in successor for the pebbly fencing.
Yeah, let's talk about the, talk about the general maintenance that we have to do.
Oh, just the, just the repairs of Pebble Beach Road, oh. Do we know where we put that?
I don't, I don't have any. Nothing for general maintenance, just for the fencing.
Okay.
Another 35.
Another 35,000, okay.
I think that's what our agreement says.
Oh, just with the island company, and their contribution is-
Contribution, our contribution.
Okay, well, we do have that budget, I thought the contractual arrangement, Gina, we have in here somewhere, don't we? For the maintenance of Pebble Beach Road.
Do we have time to do stuff between now and the end of the year, or we have to?
I don't have anything budgeted specifically for maintenance.
Our storm damage number, it might be in our storm damage number, and it's a little small.
I thought we put it somewhere, but we can follow up.
And utilities under, under public works, is that all the lights in town, or no?
This is actually for the cemetery, water.
Cemetery has its own.
Yes. And then general utilities overall for, related to water, watering, landscaping.
Oh, okay.
Is the rest of it Joe Machado?
Joe Machado is in recreation.
Okay.
Well, what other, wow.
That's kind of high utilities.
That's really high.
Yeah.
For general utilities and cemetery.
We actually reduced it 25%.
Really?
Yes, anticipating reduction.
Well, how is safety training done with, because this is a pretty hefty department, how, when and how is safety training done?
We are kicking it, kicking it up, we need a lot of safety training.
Is that stuff we're doing in-house, or do we need to bring somebody from outhouse?
We're doing it in-house now, we're going to-
We try to avoid outhouse for our sourcing, but-
We are going to be sending some people to the mainland for specific classes, probably at the end of fiscal year or start of next fiscal year. But we try to do a lot in-house, we have the means and methods that we can discuss, and we're trying to kick it up.
Okay, I mean, because, just in terms of safety equipment and goggles and hearing aids, not hearing aids, earplugs, and do, do we provide all of those kinds of things for staff?
We certainly do.
Yeah.
We have a little struggle getting them to wear them, but we're working on it.
Okay. Hmm, okay, thanks.
I just have a general comment across all departments, that I really felt that the number for, the overall numbers for training were fairly low. And I know we may not be able to identify between now and the end of this fiscal year, but I would love to see department heads look at next fiscal year and maybe identifying some key training for employees that they'd like to go after.
Yes, ma'am, I agree.
And some of it, it's just part of that training too, Dennis, it seemed, just all the training that we've done back in the years when I was Fire Department, it also seemed easier to bring somebody from over town here for the day, and get a bunch of people done, as opposed to sending two or three over at a time, people are missing work. It seems to be easier to bring them here than it does to ship our people out, I mean, it's just food for thought, I mean, it's whatever is convenient for us, I mean, that seems to be, work better for us, but not for them.
It's true, that's exactly what we did in August, had to have this confined space, and three certification people come out, and we're going to look towards doing that in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Turn the page. Amanda?
Next page is planning, building engineering.
Hi.
Hi. I'm kind of here if you have any questions, there's a couple of new things in us, we're going forward with the MyGov software, which is an automating, automated permitting system, where you can fill out your permits and your, it has a building component and a planning component. So we're trying to work on the building component first, that's in the special, under the special department expenses, it says MyGov permits and inspection module, so that's a new thing for us this year. Pat Grady's working with us on that, and that will allow people to take out their permits online, eventually maybe even pay for them, their permits online. It also has a, part of the module is where Brian can track his inspections, so we'll be getting him a, I think we're going to get him a tablet where he can do that, use that out in the field. So that's a new thing for us, we may be changing the company that we currently get all of our property data from to go to a company where we also has GIS aspects, so hopefully we're going to be reviving our GIS program. And then everything else is just pretty standard and straightforward, Brian's contract, I believe, is in here for building inspection services. Then we have our plan check, there's an amount in here for our plan check services, which is, that's kind of a placeholder, we write a check to Escale for our plan check services, but we recoup all of that money plus some on the revenue side. And otherwise, it's kind of standard saying for last year, we made our cut as requested before we came in, so if you have any questions.
Just have a question about the copier, $19,000.
That includes both copiers, we have a, the copier in our office is also a color copier, and that also includes the new wide format machine that we got just this past year, that is a scanner copier also. So that includes both of those machines. We are currently, as we speak, trying to negotiate a new lease, because the one in our office is at the end of its fire year lease, and we're operating out of one paper drawer, because of the jam, so we're trying to get that machine replaced, but that cost, our goal is to keep that cost within the same window that we're monthly leased now.
I wonder if we added up all of our copiers, how much money we're talking about a year?
Planning advisor?
Wait, because, no, no, because I, I guess, once we, so once we get, I mean, I can understand the special needs of the big stuff, but with all of this fancy computer stuff, and I'm not belittling it, it's just, I'm the ignorant one. So once you, Denise, once you can get me off this paper, we can maybe reduce by a copier, once I learn to get smarter on a computer. When do we still not have, when does the world not have to copy?
Well, if you recall, we weren't going to have to use paper once we got computers.
I know.
But I think in the copier, my opinion, copiers, the cost of a copier goes up at the speed of the copier and the specialty features that it has. It has a stapler or a colator, you could get a smaller, slower copier, for, which might work for lower volumes, but, and I think we've tried to hit the middle ground, where something fast enough where it wouldn't take three days to run off an agenda.
Right.
But yet, keep it within the realm of reasonableness, and then we only have the one machine that does colors, so we try to keep our color down.
I know.
What is a suggestion, Mayor, maybe what we could do, we can move towards a policy of going paperless where possible, but what the unintended consequence might be that you're sitting at a meeting on your tablet.
Well, I know, so I was being a little facetious.
Yeah, yeah, no, but it's fine.
But it is amazing how that, that old technology is so expensive to date, still, you know? And everything else seems to go down in cost, but copiers sure don't seem to get any cheaper.
Amanda said the bells and whistles go up on copiers, used to be you'd copy something, and now you can copy, collate, turn the PDF, scans.
You can three-hole punch it, it'll do everything except wash dishes.
The scanning costs are pretty awesome stuff, I mean, that's really nice, we get a letter here, we can scan it and send it to all you guys.
And we all buy all of our copiers from the same company, so we're getting some bulk deal?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
I think we're all with Rico, used to be Lanier, now it's Rico.
I'm in school too, I think, so when they come over, they'll, oh, the services, I'll-
Okay.
So they save money that way, we don't get the benefit.
So contractual services under your department is, 148 is who, is what?
The, which one, I'm sorry.
All the stuff above it.
That's the total. Contractual, contractual services, we have special services, we have, I think we have Steve Plant, which is the planning consultant, I think Brian is in here, some of this is overhead for Scott. The plan check is that's for Escale, we have a contract with them.
I'm sorry, yeah.
The 61,000, I believe, is Brian.
Okay.
I don't, I'm not quite sure, I know the relationship between the 61 and the, you have to explain this one, Gina, the 62 where it comes across to the 10,995 ongoing, is that just a change in Brian's?
That was the increase in the last contract.
And the difference in the increase, okay.
And we're still feeling that we don't, this is a question for the world, we still don't feel like we need full-time building inspections? I mean, I heard about an incident up on Upper Whitley, and I don't know if things happen because we don't have somebody here five days a week, or what, I don't know when we give in, when is the breaking point to needing something full-time?
I think that it depends on what our expectations are from Brian. If we want him, I think the need for him to do inspections of construction is probably adequate. But if we want him to be on duty to also help cover other types of emergencies, then there may be a need for expanded building official responsibilities. I know a lot of times when we have issues in Brian's, I hear Dennis has been able to respond and assist with those situations.
I can tell you that generally, it's only in much larger cities that you have full-time building inspectors.
I would much rather have a full-time administrative assistant.
Yeah, a lot of cities go with LA County, and then-
Yeah, but a lot of them are doing, well, I think Brian even works Redondo or something.
He does.
The two days that he's not here, he's at Redondo.
Five days a week, but they're just working three days here and three over there, so there is a need for a full-time somewhere, I would think, but, I like your answer.
Well, because code enforcement is also really busy too, you know, and so, and code, I don't know, it seems, seems, you know, we got, again, we got things on the books, we want to put up civil fines, we want to do all this, but then who do we have to enforce anything? At some point, we're going to, and then if the money comes back in, then we would help pay for them, it just seems, I mean, I can respect your opinion, manager, city manager, but, but I don't know when we say, again, you know, somebody to go in to make sure people aren't working on weekends and, and all the stuff.
That may be an expansion of your code enforcement staff, which, because code enforcement is, part of it's allocated to the building, planning enforcement responsibilities, I believe, and so, it may be- And so it may be, it's my opinion, cheaper to hire a code person than to add hours.
And then train them or in, in some of, do they, do they need a special qualification to be a building inspector? They do?
To be a building inspector, yes. But to go up and say, hey, you're working on Sunday and you're not supposed to.
Right.
I mean he's the certified building official, I mean it's.
That's a big deal. So I don't know, it's, we need to expand something, I think.
He has to know a little bit about, you know, different types of constructions and codes and laws and.
Right.
The effectiveness and the efficiency of our building inspector and, and code enforcement right now is, is lacking, to say the least. And with, with the new ordinance that we're petitioning to pass in, in the recent future, they're going to be a little bit busier, so I think there definitely needs to be some management there and like you, I just heard you say you could use an administrative assistant as well, so.
I'm just still banging the bell to try to get Christie off the front desk. I've been banging that bell for a long time, so, and I'll just spend some time out at the front desk also, so, anyway. But I think going forward, I think talking about the class comp study, I think we're going to get some good information out of that as to what people are doing and where they're spread thin and maybe where they're not spread thin. And the HR consultant will be able to help us make those assessments, who's doing what, you get a really clear idea of what people are doing.
Rich, were you going to say something?
No, no, I just answered my question.
I mean, yeah, it's, it's, I don't know when we talk about general policies or whatever, but I still kind of have a little something about the covering the front desk thing with, with qualified people that have to get off of their job to go in there and do it. It doesn't sit well with me when it's very distracting, but I don't, I, I know Ben wasn't really too much in favor of that, I don't know what the rest of you are thinking. It would be an increase even if we hired somebody for twenty hours a week to help with filing and all the little stuff that needs to be done. And if we have to wait for class comp to say we've got some holes, maybe we wait, but an observation I have when I'm here and I don't think that's the best way to do it, but.
We use highly qualified people to fill in.
Yeah, I know.
If I could, because I think this is, you know, a couple of things on this. It helps in cross-training, it helps, because you never know when somebody might not be available and so if you have multiple people that can fill that area, that's useful. I also, we're a small city, in small cities, it's how it is, you wear multiple hats, we don't, you don't have the luxury of having one person do one thing only and then I guess to, then to beat it to death, because I.
That's okay.
It's kind of gets me going. You know, it's all about customer service and, and, and I think that if the mentality is that you're being interrupted, you need to rethink that, because these are not interruptions, these are just different types of customers. And because you might be diverted from a task momentarily, you know, you, you need to be nimble, you need to have your mind open, you need to be able to serve in multiple areas and we don't have the luxury of just saying, I'm this one person, I only do this. No, no, we're fifty-nine full-time people and we all have to wear multiple hats, me included.
But you don't cross-train up, so, but who can go into the planning department when somebody's down and do what they do? Or who can go into finance because they're technical? So that's why I'm saying if you've got something that's simple as answering the phone and saying, telling, and here's the, go on the website, that to me is less money twenty hours a week.
But I would also say that if you're in an administrative assistant category, if your job title is administrative assistant and you read that job description, you will see that there's a number of duties that you are potentially prescribed to do. It doesn't just simply say, no, thou shalt only do planning job duties, no, we don't, we can't operate that way.
I understand.
We just can't, we can't think that way and I, and I, I take exception to that because I really think, you know, we need to remember that.
It's just something we differ on and that's okay.
It is, it is, but you know, it's important.
Okay.
And that's the planning page, would you like to move on to the next?
Sure.
The next page is community promotion, or better known as the chamber of commerce and this lays out other items. So chamber total is actually twenty-two percent of your TOT and the estimate for this year is ninety-four, nine hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. And what happens during the year is we take that, divide it by twelve, send them a check and then there's a cleanup action at the end of the year to see exactly what we've received, because sales tax and lags by several months. You get charged for it, you send it up to the state, we get it, then, so we take several months to, to kind of recoup that and send it back to the chamber.
A true-up entry.
And this also includes, as you can see, grand pre-expenses in the past.
Is there any way to find out exactly what the entire breakdown is for the chamber budget or what it's been in the past?
What we're going to do, Councilmember Sampson, this has been kind of on our, our list of things to do. It, it has been not until the very recent past that we've had our financial house in, in good shape where we can provide numbers when people ask for them. And so we're, we're in a position now, I believe, where we can have that conversation with the chamber, they're going to be having new leadership as you know, and I think that with Jim coming on board, what we'd like to see is maybe some additional delving into the detail as to what specifically that money is being used for.
We know what it's being used for.
We have the budget.
Well, I don't, I don't, it's been my experience that I've not seen some of the detail as I would have liked to have seen it from the chamber.
It's nine hundred thousand total and it's three hundred thousand marketing and six hundred thousand payroll.
Well, there you go, that's exactly what I'm talking about. I'd like to talk, you know, let's talk about salaries, let's talk about all, all those things.
Yeah, it'd be nice to see the breakdown in hard copy and what it's been in the past and then what it is now, so that we're at a transit, we're, we're in a transition period and the chamber's in a transition period, maybe this is a good time to look at the chamber and see exactly how much money that they are receiving and maybe if that, that could be drawn back a little just so that we can put that money back into the general fund.
Well, we're not, we're not able to put it back into the general fund because that would take a vote to, to change that apportionment of, of the people. However, all I was suggesting was that I think that with respect to what the mayor pro temp said, I think we could get a better breakdown on some of the categories that they spend money on. I don't, I couldn't tell you for instance what, what salary ranges they pay their folks and what specifically they, the direct marketing monies.
That would be nice to know.
Well, I, I mean I could tell you all that, having been the CFO for the chamber in executive level, but the, what I, what I would like to say for Joe is that that information is available to you. If you wanted to reach out to Wayne, he would certainly sit down and give you historical information and then also go through specifically what, what the budget currently is and where the money comes from and where it goes.
I'd rather it just come from the city manager, that's, that's, I'd rather go through him and, or city finance director, that would be more beneficial to me and I'd be more satisfied in that way, because I've been asked by many, many of my constituents about the chamber budget and I just, I just like to see it firsthand, that's all. So, so I know firsthand, I'd like to see it right in front of me and I would, I don't want to have to go pulling teeth to get, to get to it either. I just, I'm just asking for it right now, out in the open, so it's, the record sits as it is, I need, I need that information for my constituency.
But, but also you touched on something, okay, but yes, it is something that could go to the voters as a vote, but that's how it would be changed.
That's how it changes in a first place.
Yeah.
Correct? Yeah, absolutely.
And it's only been on the ballot once and it passed and it's been going for how many years?
Too many.
Lots.
Okay.
Too many.
Okay.
On this particular page, the Oktoberfest dollars are only a thousand?
This is a placeholder to actually create that account, it's, my understanding is that revenues exceed expenditures in this area, so this is to actually create, if this is going to be an ongoing event.
Starting point.
It would be a starting point, so when it all balances out in the end, this is really just a placeholder.
Okay. And Fourth of July parade?
And Fourth of July, yes, parade, correct.
Or no, extravaganza, extravaganza, okay.
Celebration.
And again, that also is a placeholder. And we can go to recreation next.
Turn the page.
We can call Jan up and, but then have you, if any interest in these specific questions?
It seems like all of the programs, Pony Lee, tackle football, onto the next page, flag football, there's only proposed budget of a hundred dollars, that seems really low for programs.
Similar to the other ones that Gina just mentioned, those are placeholders, so we are charging exactly or just over what the cost is to run the program. Uniforms, individual youth and adult sports-specific insurance for each player, balls and equipment, all of those are what their fee goes to pay for, so this doesn't reflect what the revenue side is of, of that, so, so that balances it out.
But the basic budget really should be, if we were planning, if it's cost you five thousand dollars for uniforms and blah, 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 that really should be a five thousand dollar budget.
Correct.
And then, and then on the, so it shouldn't be the small, these small amounts.
Correct, so we had placeholders in there in the last year's budget, if you look back and see it was a similar thing and we were hoping by tracking individual revenues and expenditures that we could show you an accurate, accurate reflection in this year's budget. Unfortunately, because of how the finance department just getting everything caught up and everything, a lot of those still went into one general rec bucket and then will be distributed out, but haven't yet, so we're going to start from a really good place this year and you'll get that accurate number next year, is our goal.
Okay.
Yeah, the finance, we set up a whole, all new account numbers as you see here and we're tracking those revenues July one going forward, so last year they're all in one bucket for the most part.
So the utilities of the Joe Machado Field?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Is that broken down in, for water, electricity, and so on?
It's not, because it's on, it'll, it's reflected on the same bill from Edison, so they're, they're broken up just into the location. So the Joe Machado utilities, that reflects the two water meters that are up there, that both service the field. One of them, the main one that services the field also services the bathrooms, the concession stand, the drinking fountain. We are looking into separately metering the concession stand since all of our leases for city leases, we're hoping to get those all on separate meters so that, you know, the city doesn't have to do, be a pass-through for their utility cost, so, but that, and then that includes all of the electricity, so electricity in the courtyard, in the buildings, the restrooms and the field lights, those are all on one line item.
So will we be able to look back at the Edison Hills to see how much water usage, how much?
Yes, and internally in the, in our department, we track how much we do, how much we use for water and electricity separately. It's still all water and all electricity, but the amount that's being used for the buildings is so minimal compared to the amount for the field lights and for the field watering, so I can, I can certainly pull that out and give that to you if you want to take a look.
The other thing, I think they talked at one point about doing our, upgrading our well that we have out there?
Yeah.
And there's been, I don't see anything in here, but is that just?
It's not in the budget for this year.
No, budget, okay.
We were hoping to get an estimate for, we, for having one of the companies who was doing other well work with that island company specifically with the golf course, while they were here to also do an assessment on our well. The cost is considerable just to do the assessment, it's something that we can budget in the, you know, going forward still.
Be interesting to see if there's, if there's any water inside, inside that aquifer.
What it produces, right, what the well specifically produces right now is very, very minimal.
Oh, yeah.
Every single day it dries, you know, so that we can, we still, we do operate, we use well water currently, it's very minimal and it's very, very high salinity.
Now, I wonder if it's just because that's dried up or our well's just so old we can't pump with it?
Well, that's, that's the two, the two thoughts, one could be the aquifer in that area is so low, or it, it also has a lot to do with timing, you know, if the golf course draws down the aquifer in that kind of area, since they're directly below our property, then we can adjust our timing to try to beat them to the punch and get, use water.
You would get it first.
The other thought is probably the well, because it has had, not had any maintenance in so long, yeah, the hole's all could be calcified or, you know.
I was just wondering if that was in, okay.
It's not in this year's budget, but we can definitely take a look for next year, which will be here before we know it.
A rare commodity, might not be such a bad deal.
And the rent for Tremont, the rent for Field of Dreams, if those, right, rent for Tremont Hall and rent for Field of Dreams, what do those cost, figures?
Those, that's the property tax, the island company passes on.
Is there any way that we can, since we don't normally pay property tax, we can get them off the rolls?
Tell the island company that we're exempt and so we don't.
No, can we tell, can we tell the county we're paying this?
We can, we can, I can talk to Supervisor Knabey's office, do their go-to, go-to person there, yeah, we can do that. It'd be an interesting conversation.
And what is the special department expenses?
That is kind of a catch-all for everything, so let's say, you know, we have a Fall Fest coming up and we need to get zip ties to hang signs, you know, and order them from a mainland supplier, that's where it would get coded to. So anything that doesn't have its own specific line item that we do would go in there.
The new name for miscellaneous.
Pretty much, yeah.
Yeah, definitely.
And in this year, is there any expense to, to finish with the horseshoes?
There's not, because everything else is in-house from here on out.
Okay, we don't have to buy the horseshoes or the anythings or the?
No, the participants would bring their own horseshoes when they're coming to play and all other materials have already been purchased, so the install is, is in staff time.
Okay. And the portable pool, I saw that you took that out of there and, I went on, I don't, what size of pool are you looking at?
Previously, we had a four-foot tall eighteen by thirty-six oval.
Okay, so I'm seeing thirteen by fifteen, I'll just give you the information.
Yeah.
Thirty-three by eighteen with a skimmer and, and then a thirty-three by eighteen by fifty-two for like twenty-seven hundred bucks. So, I mean, I don't know what, you were saying about ten, but if it's, and you need to order that sooner than later for summer, so I would like to see the pool be put back in there in some denomination.
Pool's on the ten-year capital improvement project list still.
Let's just put this on there.
We did, we had taken it out as just a cost saving, if you want to make it a priority, we can put it back in. What our thought was just holding one more summer of swim in the ocean.
I'm for portable pool personally, but, and I don't know that, and if, and if you could look, if it's not going to cost ten grand, it's even better, but, I don't know the favor and the flavor of the group is, but.
How many participants did we have last year?
Very low, and I do think part of it is because of the ocean.
Because of beach.
Yeah, oh, totally.
I think part of the reason why we had higher attendance with the above-ground pool is because so few locals don't get access to a pool that even though they didn't really care about putting their kid in swim lessons, they wanted them to be in the pool for some amount of time and so I think it was a value added to them, whereas I think you saw exactly who really wanted to teach their kids swim lessons, you know, how their kid learned how to swim, they had to, you know, do it in the ocean, which is open to everyone, so definitely you would see an increase in attendance.
You have big numbers, you have big numbers in that swimming pool.
Yeah, we would get at least consistently thirty-five to forty participants all summer long.
That's pretty good.
And then if we did open rec swim, you know, you'd see probably about that as well.
And mommy and me's were wonderful.
Mm-hmm, yep.
So.
Maybe we, we could make the water for it.
Well, we would use, we would use saltwater, that was our intention if we did an above-ground, which is what we had transitioned to in the last year or two of, of the above-ground pool, so.
And you need to order it before, so you can get it up by the time school's out.
If you guys want it in there, we can put it back in there.
Yeah, we would certainly.
Whatever you want to do.
And it is in this budget for the ten-year capital improvements list, it remained in there, so I, I think we should add it back to this.
Okay. But I don't know that you're going to need. But I don't know that you're gonna need ten. Do you think you're really gonna need ten?
Well, I don't, um, part of it would be an assessment of the pump that we have, the, even with the saltwater, you would still need some chemicals. You have to be able, you know, have the ability to shock the pool still if something happens, which it does. As long as it comes with, you know, all of those things and the infrastructure surrounding it.
Right, okay.
So previously, it had been on the pad that the skate park was on, you know, part of it was taken up by that. Obviously, that wall's come down and there's a lot more equipment in the skate park than there was. So, I don't know if that's a feasible location. So if we put it adjacent to the skate park, which we certainly could do, we'd have to do additional fencing, cause you'd have to have the area, you know, separated. Above-ground pools don't have to be on a slab, so you wouldn't have to pour cement. It would just, you know, prepping the space and all of those things. I don't know, I mean, we would certainly, we can give you a cost breakdown immediately on that, but.
So we should just put the ten in and forget it for less than that great?
I certainly wouldn't cut it down to four or something like that.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Cindy, the, the pool was in the CIP in fifteen sixteen.
Um. I guess you are correct, yep.
Thank you, Jen. We're the harbor fund.
Do you want to bring, oh, Dennis is over, okay, good.
The harbor fund is a proprietary fund, so it receives its revenues from fees and services. There are two funds. There's a one oh three fund, which is really operational, and one oh four fund, and for infrastructure.
So, the, since we've talked last time Gina and I met and we removed some stuff out of the budget, um, there's one more thing that I'd like to remove, and that was the pier crane. I want to defer that to when we have the building of the fuel dock, when we mobilize the crew to do the pilings at the fuel dock. I'd like them to do the pilings at the pier, which also includes a piling underneath the crane. So I don't want to take it out twice.
So we use the pier crane. How much, I can't see that, what?
That's on one oh four seventy.
One oh four seventy.
So go three more pages in.
It's fifteen thousand dollars.
Okay.
The only other thing there would be the harbor security cameras, which have already been approved and purchased, and the pier generator, which is in the midst of going in as we speak. And, uh, we did add in the swim float as Councilmember Simpson had asked for.
You added in what?
The swim float.
Oh, right.
Very good.
I should also say that harbor one oh three fund consists of, uh, one page, which is Public Works, Dennis, that's a part of his world, and then, uh, one oh three seventy and seventy-one are related to, to Brian. In this first page, one oh three dash fifty, you'll see the Baywatch contracts, restroom contracts, shower facility contracts, waterfront trash contract.
Is the beach maintenance the new sand?
On the, uh, one oh three five oh?
On one oh three fifty, yes. And is the pressure wash park and bleacher stairs, is that referring to the dive park stairs?
The dive park and the stairs across from the Villa Portofino Hotel on the?
Okay.
North beach.
My only other question for you, Brian, was what, what equipment are you leasing? You've got on one oh three seventy-one equipment leases?
That's a catch-all, I believe, where it has our, Gina, correct me if I'm wrong, but it has like our patrol boats and?
Yes.
All of our vehicle equipment.
That's another internal service fund that charges all the other funds that have vehicles. So, it includes a mechanic, it includes charging for vehicles that are purchased, and it gets charged out by a percentage to the other funds.
And on our last budget study, we talked about the harbor work van, the big truck being replaced with tools that needed to be replaced, and that was on our last CIP for ninety thousand. On this particular CIP, it's not in there yet. It's, it's not earmarked in any of the?
So what we did, this, this goes back to what we were talking about earlier in this meeting. What I've asked for is a comprehensive vehicle and equipment inventory. To, and so I removed that van because I didn't have any, while it might be desirable to have a new van, I wanted to see the methodology in getting there. I, I, I wonder, without the comprehensive spreadsheet, um, if that is the number one thing that needs to be purchased. And so that's why we removed that.
So, I think this, uh, the previous, couple years ago, this previous replacement schedule that has all the vehicles listed on it?
Mm-hmm.
Um, and Brian can probably talk better to this than I can, but there used to be an allocation that went every year for each of the items into a vehicle fund that was sort of preparing for, rather than coming?
Right.
With an expenditure of ninety thousand, you'd prepared for ten thousand each year for nine years.
Right.
And now you're at the point of replacement.
Right.
So is that, is that something, rather than recreating the wheel, can that be brought back?
It's the same, right, it's the same thing, but it's, it'll be up to date and it would be current. I'm saying the same thing twice. Right, you, you'd be contributing towards your need rather than just simply paying as you go each budget, budget year for, for something. Right?
No, I understand that. So then going back to this need, at our last study session, this was a need for this coming year, before June, that you were looking at. So where are we, where are you at now?
I disagreed with the need.
Oh.
I thought that, you know, I, I wanted to see that inventory completed before, because I can't come to you in good conscience and say, yes, we want ninety thousand dollars for a harbor van, if I don't know that maybe we also need to spend fifty thousand fixing this other piece of equipment or, you know, I just didn't have anything current that, that maybe have that type of, uh, decision to bring to you. I, I wasn't comfortable.
Okay.
Do you have a full complement of staff right now?
We do, other than the assistant harbor master's been detailed up to the garage, so we're backfilling with part-time work, or part-time workers.
Are you shy to part-timers too, or just one?
I have two that are basically on the mainland and not able to call. And I have one that has just recently went full-time with Edison. So, I think the way the city manager's always allowed it before is, I don't care if you have twenty of them, but just don't go over this amount of hours. So you put it out amongst the, I mean, you can, say you had a thousand hours, I mean, you can put, uh, fifty hours of over twenty people or, you know, a hundred hours over ten people.
But you'll have a full complement come summer season?
Come summer, yes.
Okay.
So the majority of your overtime is done in the?
Wintertime during the storm season, or if I can't find a part-timer to cover. I believe, our overtime budget is, you know?
That's pretty great.
Not very significant.
No, I know, that's nice, that's nice. And then I'm looking at the utilities, electricity, saltwater, sewer, gas, water, and EMP, which I don't know what that means. Is that the, is that, is that the number from which you send bills to our tenants on the pier?
No, that, I believe, the expenditure is included in there, but I don't know where the revenue side is in the, on the revenue budget. But what you're looking at for the, the sewer saltwater, um, that is like the pier restrooms, and the restrooms across from the tuna club, and the restrooms at the mole.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, this, harbor's paying its fair share for all the restrooms that we have or the saltwater that we use to the sewer and the saltwater fund.
But you come up with a formula to bill the tenant?
I've been billing the tenants, uh, for freshwater for, on the pier at least, for, uh, I would say ten years. Whereas we have them sub-metered, and I was doing it every year, and the finance department has recently asked me to do that quarterly. And we will be adding in the cost of the meter. So if there's six people on there, you know, I just before said, if it's forty dollars a month for the meter, we'd have the meter anyway. I just ate that. But he's saying, take that forty dollars and divide it by those six tenants, or six people using that meter. Put a meter charge on it.
And electricity, how's that happening? Does everybody have their own little electric meter?
Everybody has their own meter, except for, what did we come up with, wet spot rentals?
Two tenants, maybe? Vending and?
The vending machine, which I believe is built into their lease, and the wet spot rentals, which will be, uh, billing accordingly.
The fish market has its own below you?
Yes.
Okay, Eric, okay.
All righty.
Any more questions from harbor?
Mm-mm.
Do you want to?
Can we take like a two-minute break?
Sure. Was that what you were gonna ask, right?
Two hours and ten minutes. Yeah, just, just a brief break, then we can come back.
Sure. Thank you.
Okay.
You've called the island company or called them?
No, it's all the county.
Oh, you tried this?
Again, we're county government, they're gonna pay taxes and more.
So you already tried this? You know what, when we, when we?
I got your message.
Yeah. And then I, and I will say, but I will still call supervisor. It will not, that's why I want you to say something, because it's like, hey, we're not just, we're already caught you now, right? We're already, we already called up, nobody, right? It's not.
What? Look at you guys. I guess I'm just used to sitting in my house more than you are.
You said it, not me, right?
You're elevated, why? You have the cushion.
I have a cushion anyway.
Jason, no, Ollie, when you took a bite of these, I couldn't believe how noisy these things are. Take a bite of that.
Oh, they are.
Oh, they're crunchy and hard, like, look.
The one oh five fund is the general funds capital improvement fund. So we transfer money from the general fund to the one oh five fund to do general fund capital projects. And this year, as you can see, we have several. I know you're familiar with these. Feel free to let me know if you have any questions.
Sure, just go through them really quick.
Okay. E-slab bus stations, this is forty thousand dollars to create the slab for the?
Bus.
The buses that we're getting through MTA.
Right.
Through the grant. And I believe it's also electrical and everything associated with that.
Oh, that's electrical.
Do we have a plan for that yet?
We're working on that. Um, we're hopeful, I'm sorry, we're, we're talking to the island company, there are a couple of locations on the, in the Pebble Beach area that they're vacillating between.
Yes, we're meeting with, uh, electrical designer Wednesday.
Oh, I understand that. Never mind, I don't have any questions.
Yeah, we're up there.
I don't have any questions.
I do.
Let me explain it to you.
Do we, do we have freshwater resource study in here twice?
It's, it's actually going from the general fund being transferred. So I detailed it out on the transfer side, and then I'm showing it again on the receiving side.
Okay. I understand.
So we have museum stairs next for fifty thousand dollars.
That is, is gonna bring in for about fifteen.
Pardon me?
You're gonna bring those stairs in for about fifteen? We like that. We're doing in-house and that includes materials?
No, uh, this is public, public bid.
Oh. And you think that people will come in under this bid? I mean, under this amount?
It's gonna be, uh, close. We still don't have the final designs, so I'm not sure of the materials yet.
Okay.
Should have those one in a few days.
Yeah, maybe we could stick them to coming in below that. That way we don't have to spend beyond what we're budgeting.
I agree.
That would be great.
Yeah, um, it's, just, we can't make the call yet on the materials. We significantly reduced a lot of the other things, uh, trying to, like, the, the city, uh, city hall roof, we're gonna do that internally.
Sooner than later, I'm imagining.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause it's gonna rain tomorrow.
Yeah.
Or the day after.
Two, two thousand, city hall roof? Is there any chance, does it, you guys have it tarp'd off?
You're good, yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Wait, I got a question. That doesn't seem like much.
It's not, no, we're just, it's gonna be a, like a two-year fix.
And the AV chamber improvements for, what do we, why is that so darned expensive?
That is a, we, it was broken out previously. I've lumped it together, we've actually reduced it by several thousand dollars.
Oh, okay.
It's for the construction to get to the dais. It's for the monitors, it's for the new, uh, updated?
Just to break?
Information, AC in the control room only, uh, to, yeah, get rather warm in there. And I think that's pretty much, at a new podium, but not quite as fancy, that's where we cut a little bit.
Oh, okay.
We're gonna see, we're gonna make that in-house.
An adjustable podium.
And that's all listed out on sixty-six on the CIP ten-year.
Okay.
All of the specific items. All right.
And the, you have casita improvements for eighteen thousand, that was dropped down by two thousand, and then the Pebble Beach Road improvements. That is now, and like I said, in the successor side, we're still working on the numbers a little bit.
Anything you would have pleaded for that Ben made you cut out?
No.
I can't answer that question.
I can't answer that question, why not?
Not when Ben's in the room. You have to talk on the side.
We're a team!
I will say that every department had, did their job and went through their own budget and came up with at least five percent. And that was terrific, really. And the city attorney also had suggestions, so everybody really came together to try to whittle it down. It was great.
Were people whittling down other people's budgets?
There were also those suggestions too. There's a lot of stay in your swim lane type, type comments, you know? Yeah.
I have never heard that expression.
Yeah.
Stay in your swim lane.
Yeah, I always love when somebody finds their savings in someone else's budget. No, no, no.
You're ready.
So we'll move on to the one oh seven fund, and we've got several one oh eight and one ten.
And, and sorry, when I say all departments, David also spent a lot of time going through this too. So he helped us a bunch.
I saw, I saw him.
We have a combination in the sewer fund of charging city staff there, uh, who work in this particular area, as well as direct time, and then also ES's contract. And I'll go through the first page here, you'll see the breakout for ES contractor, we're trying to be more specific, under contractual services, with the insurance, overtime, and maintenance. We also have a line there, it says salt rate analysis, it should say sewer rate analysis. It's fifteen thousand dollars to do the sewer rate analysis, which we'd like to go forward rather quickly on that RFP process before the end of the year. If you have any questions on this.
I don't recall H2S control.
That's a bioxide.
That's actually the bioxide.
Oh, the bioxide, okay, right, right, right.
Machine's on port.
Any, we can move to the next page? One oh seven fifty. We have a lot of the fees, home, this is where the fees are, in terms of compliance, outfall inspection, annual charges, waste discharge fee, AQMD fees, lab fees.
What exactly is, there's no budget for it, but what exactly is a most sensitive species study?
It's actually, um, every two years it's done on, um, they, they use a certain species for? for, to test our effluent as it goes out of the ocean. Each year, each two years, they have to do this study to find out the most sensitive one that they can use when they're doing their testing. There's like, they can use the sea enemy, minnows, and different, different species like that. It tests how toxic your effluent is going out to the ocean.
But don't we kill everything?
Interesting.
Don't we kill everything? Because we're salt fresh?
No, we don't wanna kill everything.
Small human child has been determined to be most sensitive.
Sixty to one when it goes out the outflow, so. No, it doesn't kill everything. There's an abundance of, annually, they do, they go down there and do a bottom species analysis, and then, and it's pretty abundance of species down there.
There's gotta be a lot down there.
Actually, truthfully, yeah, if you notice, all the fishermen and all that, they usually fish right where the outflow goes out, it's warmer water, you have a lot more species in that area.
Before we started treating it, there was a lot of stuff down there.
They like the nutrients that come out.
The outflow, inspection, is that contractor, private contractor does that?
Yes. Yeah, a quantity level, I would say, does that. They do that, and they do the bottom, annually, they do that, and they do the bottom testing and everything at the same time.
So sewer fund is...
Is that once a year, twice a year?
Once a year.
Once a year?
Yes, or July.
So the sewer fund is all environment services? Everybody?
Some charge back.
What?
Some charge back to the city.
Okay. I mean, it's just interesting by how they have their salaries and benefits broken down.
That's city staff, actually. So it's a combination of city staff as well as environs. We have environs.
Oh, so environs is the big lump up top, I mean, the big nut, one...
We do sewer work too.
Oh, okay. Okay, duh.
So it's a relationship that we have with environs, they'll come up with requests for the budget, capital improvements, and then also Dennis on the public work side looks at it from an internal perspective. So it's a combination of both.
Do you guys, do you guys have suggestions on what you could, that you could give us that would benefit us as a city going into the future, that is, as a company? Do you ever do an analysis like that? I mean, between your, your company, that you could give us advice at where we need to go or spend money on to make our sewer treatment plant more efficient, more...
That's the stuff we plan out on our CIP and stuff like that, yeah. And we've done, since we took it over, we've done big improvements to get it up to speed, and that's what we continue to do.
Okay.
Those would be on like the CIP five-year outlook or ten-year. We give suggestions, yeah.
Very nice, yeah, good. We need that. Our reclamation system's gonna, you know, need to be online.
You'll notice a lot of these fees, if you look at the last few years since we've taken over, a lot of these, these different fees and stuff have gone down because we've done improvements and stuff like that.
Great.
Just on some of these emergency repairs, are we still stocking up valves, piping and everything? I didn't see much.
Yeah, that's a line item that I was just talking to Gina about, that we got that, it's in the budget here, so I'm, I'm not sure exactly which line item it is, but to stock up, you'll see it when we get to saltwater.
Is that for the capital improvement emergency repairs? Would that be...
Yeah, the stock up on parts and stuff like that.
Gina, could you point us to where that is? Because we are buying a bunch of valves, I assume you recall, right? Remember?
That's in the saltwater.
Okay, saltwater, not in sewer side? No valves?
We're gonna buy a bunch of parts and stuff like that, that have an inventory in case emergencies and stuff like that, yes.
Yeah.
We are, that's one part of this budget right here.
Would that be capital improvement?
We have funds on 10725 at the bottom, there's emergency repairs, thirty-eight thousand, two fifty. And then also another amount for thirty-eight thousand on the bottom of 10825.
Thank you.
Oh, okay. Generally, you don't want a valve in a sewer system because you kinda wanna let it flow through. Good point.
I'll remember that one.
So then we can move on to page 10825. This is a part of our CIP process, a hundred and fifty thousand from Dennis's CIP.
I'm sorry, can I back up a little bit? I'm on 10725, the Falconer? For seventeen six, that's, is that the three-day-a-week business? Or how many days a week is that one?
This was the original agreement, it hasn't been modified.
So it's three days, three days from us?
Sharing.
Currently? Okay. All righty. I'm sorry, go ahead.
And then on 10825, you will call the dumping station that David discussed last budget study session.
So he can meter his stuff into his plan.
And a continuation of the SCADA program. And what David did, he moved projects to the next fiscal year, you'll see that on the CIP. A lot of them are moved to July of next year. Which will be starting the budget in about a month, so.
Yeah, I mean, I don't wanna digress, but we've, you guys have whittled this down to one point one, and then all of a sudden, next year, CIP goes to six point five. So somehow in the next seven months.
Well, we're also going to, yeah, but we, that's just, that was moved there, I don't think that, that will be probably whittled down as well.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, we're not gonna go from spending.
It's gonna be moved from here to there.
No, I mean, obviously, it's an, it's an organic document, so it's gonna keep moving, but, um, but it was just, we, this idea of keep moving things, are we gonna be able to do it in the next seven months? And then, you know, we're gonna get to that.
In, in December next month, it's probably gonna go down some more, because it's already November. So we've only got, you know, eight months left for the fiscal year.
Right.
So every month it's gonna decrease. If you're talking about fourteen fifteen.
I'm talking about what happens overnight from fourteen fifteen to fifteen sixteen.
Yeah.
It's pretty dramatic.
It is. That's, it's our wish list, and, you know, probably, you're probably gonna have to massage it to get it down.
It has to do more than massage.
I think what he's trying to say is, I think it was like a total of all the CIP projects that haven't been broken down a priority yet for the next year, which will be broken down further.
Yeah. Okay.
ES is going to be doing a ten-year CIP going out, and really going to look deeper at exactly what it is they need and the timing of that.
Yeah, like, sort of like you're dealing with all the equipment with the city, all your equipment out there and stuff like that, we're gonna be doing the same thing with that.
That'd be great.
We've already got the all the inventory in a minute, so now we just gotta take the next step.
And that will be incorporated with a forecast, so you can see where revenues and expenditures are, and as you, you know, you know, we're looking for other funds. You're done with 10825, we can go to 11025? And this shows the wastewater treatment plant, the SCADA upgrade there. We have one more level of SCADA for, starting July of next year. We have a generator transfer switch and a thickener pump, which has already been approved by you and also purchased, it should be delivered any day.
It's already there, it is. We got it last week.
And the next page is saltwater fund. And you'll see ES's contract is charged here as well, as well as staff time. Also have the saltwater rate analysis, and it averages fifteen thousand dollars for each type of Prop 218 fund. And we actually, just a reminder, we included this analysis for sewer, salt, refuse, as well as stormwater, since we don't have a dedicated revenue source for that at this time outside of the general fund. So that'll be looking at that area.
I just wanna say that we can't charge the stormwater fees on the property tax, it has to go to the voters.
What stormwater? That's true, it doesn't rain anymore, right? When we get the TOT, we'll put it out there.
And 11250, again, that's salary, staff. And 11325, infrastructure, you'll see inventory amount there of twenty-five thousand, emergency repairs of a hundred and fifty-three thousand, electrical panel of a hundred and twenty-five thousand that's been designed and ready to go, I believe. And then the station valves for seventy-five thousand. Staff originally had a hundred and fifty thousand there and determined that we could really put in seventy-five thousand dollars worth by June.
So saltwater overhead is ten percent, sewer overhead is twenty percent? Just wondering.
You know, I have the breakout for the overhead, it's, it has been reduced, we definitely reduced it.
I'll just, just look at it.
And, let's see if, I think... That would be it for sewer and salt.
No, thank you.
Thanks, David.
Very good.
We have the field dock fund next, which I can tell you, we reduced the cost of fuel, revenue on the expenditure side as well as the revenue side due to shoreboats, no longer being there.
What?
The shoreboat.
The tender, all the fuel's bought on the mainland.
Oh.
And we have monies there for fuel, the float replacement, that I believe Brian discussed last time, talking about having staff work on that.
Floats, wharfs, is that what? No, that couldn't be it. Would it be under building, maintenance?
Capital outlet.
Okay.
Any other questions on field dock? Not, we can go to street fund, which is gas tax-related revenues. Gas tax muddings come from the taxes you pay on gasoline, and fortunately, street sweeping, as you're aware of, CRNR is doing street sweeping, and it's a qualified expense for gas tax.
Can I, I'm sorry, back to the field dock for a second?
Sure.
Where would the revenue stream be? In the harbor?
For field dock?
Yeah.
Yes. It's, the revenue stream is from the sale of gas.
Right, is it in the harbor, the general harbor budget?
No, it's a separate field dock enterprise fund.
You wanna see it in here, obviously?
Yeah.
Got it.
Not here.
We can, we can figure out some way to show that, I think. He's looking to reflect the revenue that we get from the gasoline sales. Somehow it'd be germane to this sheet, since the expenditures are here, I think is what you're saying.
Yeah, I mean, you have the expenditures, you don't have the revenue to offset the expenditures. So are we running in the black, or the red, or the pink, or the gray?
We're very close.
And that was gonna generate a philosophical discussion that probably not appropriate right now.
We're actually, with the hundred and twenty-five thousand, we're actually going into reserves for that. So if you look at the big sheet, it'll show that we are doing just that. That would be the larger overview. So about a hundred and eighteen thousand, we have a hundred and sixty-seven thousand in reserve for field dock. And we are overspending as a result, by about a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars, not quite the full amount of a hundred and twenty-four thousand field dock. So we're, we're pulling from reserves. And the way it's, the gas prices are set is to recover overhead and also put monies away for reserves, for purchases, so.
That's one way of pricing it. Okay.
Keep on going if you don't have any questions about gas tax. We'll be work, I'll be working closely with Chris on this, there's some money in fund balance that can be attributed to various projects. Traffic Safety Fund, this fund is actually a part of the general fund, and it was moved, this program is moved out of the general fund in order to see if it could support itself with the revenue that you gain from having code enforcement officers. And at this time, it isn't self-supportive, so we have to send money to the Traffic and Safety Fund, but that's something we're gonna be working on in the future, how to get it to be more self-supportive. I also, as you can see, this is where I transferred over the hearing officer function to this fund. And most likely, we'll be moving over the animal control function as well.
Any particular reason why Dudley's position doesn't have a percentage in here?
Can definitely add that.
That's the vehicle clerk? Is that the thought?
Mm-hmm. Yes. We can definitely add that.
Or maybe just look at it and see if it makes sense?
It does, it does. Insurance fund is next, 118, this is an internal service fund. It charges out to the other funds, similar to vehicle and the overhead fund. It's a little bit of a mix these, this last few years because of the toxic Falls Canyon case. So it isn't a true internal service fund because we are getting some reimbursement as a result. And we're not charging the departments for that, of course. But we felt it was important to house it in a separate fund, all those expenditures. So as you can see, we've got city attorney toxic.
No kidding.
Reverse it.
And then also some additional services, which are subcontracted attorneys.
These are in addition to his other budget?
Correct. And there's a hope that the city gets reimbursed for that, and has been, actually, up to the tune of about sixty-nine thousand dollars.
Yep.
Yes, for toxic. And that, I should say, that line item that talks about the two hundred and forty thousand, that's all the other experts that we anticipate being involved in the process.
I'm sorry, can we go back to 11645? I'm feeling stupid right now. Oh, well, the, um, the base salaries, that's for two people?
Percentage, it's a portion of the code enforcement, yes.
And where else do they go besides traffic safety?
Planning.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, oh, it's on this sheet, okay, I'm sorry. Okay, never mind. Never mind.
Yeah, they're fifty-fifty.
Yeah, okay.
So you've got sewer fund and traffic.
Okay, sorry.
So which sheet are we on at this point? Eighteen?
Twenty, 119.
11930?
11930.
We're not feeding the seniors anymore?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. 11930, 11830.
11830.
We're not feeding the seniors anymore?
The seniors are being fed, this is something we do need to look into deeper, in terms of how the program is structured and how we fund it.
Yeah, the mayor had a good suggestion to try to pursue some grant monies for the administration of this, and so that's something that we're looking at. This needs some attention, we recognize that.
Yeah, we, I think we asked a couple months ago in a council meeting to get an overview of how much we're spending, how much we're getting.
Okay.
So that's still...
Apologies, we'll, we'll provide that, sorry.
That's still on your to-do list.
Okay.
For three bucks, and then we pay five, so we're leaving two bucks a meal. Well, well, never mind. I'm not even gonna start. Yeah, it is, it is a great program, so we just need to look into the funding part of it.
Yep.
The next page is...
Oh, I'm sorry, Gina, sewer lateral repair, how are, have we already assisted where we need to? There's no line item for that this year?
No, this was a hope. We actually are low on funds in this particular fund, and that's where the accounting side, we're still working on that, but it's, and it isn't that that program couldn't exist in the future, it's just the funds aren't available. And in deeper analysis, we paid quite a bit in senior meals last year of one-time recoup, and then aid into... And it ate into the, the amount that was there.
I don't mean to correct you on that, but that's, that's actually CBPG funds.
Yes.
So, it is there. The money is there.
For what? Where are your sewer lateral?
For the sewer lateral repair for low income.
And that's considered reimbursement. Um, in terms of the fund balance, we're still, we have issues there, so...
Okay, I just wanted you to understand it as a grant.
Yes. So, basically what she's saying is that if we could have the program, we'd get reimbursed for it. It could be initiated. Okay. Okay, and then... Thank you, Audra. So, the next one is... Local Transportation Fund. This is MTA. And if you have any questions here, Audra's here to explain to you the county acronyms, if you have any specific questions on those.
I have about six days' worth of questions that I think, um, Ollie and myself, we're going to try to get with Audra in the next coming month or so and go through, so I'll save everybody the hassle of that right now.
And it doesn't look like we're going to be doing anything with our trolley until after the next, till next fiscal year? Yeah.
Right. I think that's, Audra, is that correct, the timeline for the trolley? What's the latest on that?
We still have to identify the total match for the project. I don't know how that fleshed out with the CIP. The, the contract has been fully executed and sent back to Metro. That's kind of where we are. The next step will be then to issue the contract to the bus, to manufacture the buses, and I, I'll wait. The contract will come back to the city council, so...
Okay.
Then it's four months at least out from that. So, I think that would probably be safe to say the purchase will happen in the next fiscal year.
So, what we're working on too, though, is, is a project plan with some timelines, because we have some things going on parallel path.
Yes, correct.
The negotiation with Catalina Transportation will, will continue. We've got the pad for the e-bus that will go.
The electricity.
Then we've got the, the, the planning of the, the route and then the delivery of, of the buses and the, so we, we have...
Right.
Things in place.
Yes.
Everything's kind of, yeah.
Okay.
So, Audra's developing a, a timeline which we'll, we will share with you, so you kind of know where things stand.
Yeah, because everything kind of has to all happen concurrently.
Right.
So, it all at the end is one seamless, hopefully...
Yes.
Operating buses.
Yeah.
That's the plan.
Yeah.
Great. And I'm just curious, the, the ten-year operation and maintenance is on the capital improvement project list. Is that just so we can see the total amount that we're looking at over ten years combined in with this purchase?
Yeah, but I, yeah, I, I think, but I guess it becomes...
Is that really a capital improvement over ten years? That should really, not really be on this.
I don't think it should, and I think that that's going to be recovered in the negotiations that happens with the, with the transportation company.
Is there...
We can remove that.
Okay.
And most CIPs define you have, if you're introducing a new CIP that's, just say, a senior center, you want to actually show the cost of operating that senior center as a full cost. So, in this case, I understand probably the provider may be supporting that. I think we're looking into that, um, operation cost.
But to, to the council member's question, I mean, that, we, we can remove it from that, this list, that's fine. I, I have no issue with that. I mean, we can, we can, how do you want to skin it, right?
Well, it, it actually comes out of this Fund One Twenty-two right now. So, so the capital improvement costs for the trolleys are being paid for in some shape or fashion out of Fund One Twenty-two. So...
But I, I think the question's really just, does it, does it belong on the ten-year CIP list?
Right.
I think that's it. And I, and I'm fine with having that list...
Right.
Somewhere else, that's fine.
Yeah.
We will have all those batteries and things in there, right?
You're going to have batteries to replace, you're going to have... You'll also have some costs associated with training the mechanics, right?
Okay, ooh, Dave's back.
Storm drain.
Next page, Storm Drain Fund. A portion of ES is charged to this fund. Um, the majority that's here of, on NPDS Legal, Storm Water Permit Program. These are all the requirements over the next, well, this next fiscal year, but it's a substantial program. You might recall Sean Hagerty was here talking about this. And these are the estimated costs to comply. The capital outlay is Dave Claris there?
Uh, yeah, the, the SCADA pumps, it's actually to incorporate the pumps and everything and the, the whole system into the SCADA system. It's not actually for pumps, the pumps that we already purchased last year. And then, emergency repairs.
Since we're talking about storm drains, a couple of years ago, it puts some really nice chicken wire in the storm drains to catch some of the stuff. A lot of the chicken wires, not there.
Okay. Was it literally chicken wire that we were using?
Uh, some sort of stainless wire mesh that would catch the leaves.
Okay, so hopefully it was some type of grate.
So, Dennis, we have to change your budget.
Do you owe the budget?
It's not that much.
Chicken wire?
It depends on the size of the deck.
But if this budget would be zero if it doesn't rain?
That's right, exactly. See? Another upside to drop.
Andy says it's raining tomorrow.
Oh, it's going to rain tomorrow.
It's raining tomorrow? Awesome.
Just over the reservoir, just out that way. It's not even going to touch town.
Winner.
Cool. Will you get another one?
Solid waste.
Solid waste, we don't get in for that.
Oh, oh, okay. Well, I thought some of that waste was pretty solid when you got it, but I...
She's getting as bad as you, Ollie.
Okay.
Oh, wow.
Here we go.
Our Refuge Fund is one-thirty-one, as well as one-thirty-two. This is the operation side. This is where, uh, you, you can also see we have a rate analysis there for fifteen thousand for the Refuge Fund. Decreased City Attorney costs estimated at this time. And we also charge CRNR's annual contract in this fund as well.
How does a city attorney get involved with solid waste? Just what, what would be an issue?
Contract last year.
Yes.
Just doing the contract?
The new contract, yeah.
The new contract.
Okay.
Well, yeah, and just, we, we constantly are going back to it, asking, you know, is this covered, is that not covered? Hey, it says this and you delivered this, you know? What's the story?
Wow, the household hazardous waste is pretty high.
That's all the TVs we take out there.
Oh, I thought they were doing them for nothing. They were so nice about...
No, they are doing, it's included in the, we have to pay for it, but we, the city, paid for it.
No, I mean, so we are being the nice people.
We're not being court.
Yeah. They're so pleasant when you give it to them.
And just to emphasize, we did reexamine our allocation costs there. You'll see a significant change in the base change column.
But there's no COLA in CRNR's.
There is a COLA in CRNR.
There is?
Yes.
Twelve ninety-five, five ninety-nine, twelve ninety-five, five ninety-nine.
God, CRNR, and this is also an adjustment from the, from the last budget, more clarity in terms of contract costs. So, it's, we've got an ongoing of ninety-nine thousand nine oh seven, for a total of one-point-three million nine five.
I'm sorry. I do see the COLA.
You're trying to trip her up.
No, I just, it's hard to get a hold of this format.
I know, I know, I agree. Okay.
See in the next page, um, CRNR is going to be per contract, purchasing a baler. They're giving us revenue. It's going to be a city asset. They'll be purchasing it, but it's part of ours. It's our, it's on our books.
They're coming to the island this Thursday and having, um, talks with us.
It's a used one, it's not a new one, right?
You'll find out why it's eighteen months late.
So, so, just, what's the deal about our green waste and being ground up and, talk to me about what all that's about?
Well, I, I think you're speaking to some of the complaints about the mulch, having other pieces of things in it. Is that the complaint?
Well, in our stuff, when we have green waste, when all the trees and stuff we're cutting down, so, so just show, take me through that process of what happens, because it's something I don't know.
Denise, you want to, this is your wheelhouse.
If the city cuts the trees, they take, we have to separate palm fronds from other things and it's part of the contract, so we are not charged for that. But if you are a homeowner or one of the condominium associations, they pay and they have a great grinder that they chew this stuff up and make it mulch.
Is it our grinder?
Yes.
Our grinder.
It is our grinder? But, so, but we dump our stuff out there, they take it and they grind it, or the we take it and we grind it?
No, they do it.
They do it.
Okay.
Is it the Royal We or the regular we?
I don't know. Okay, that's all. And they don't charge us?
No, you give me mulch, you let me get free mulch.
And we can get free mulch.
What's the line item for the brown bags?
Those are the bags that we supply to the restaurants for, you know, the sorting of the food. They're supposed to be using them.
Oh, those are green bags?
Green bag, brown bag, it's been...
It's not the blue bag.
Okay, I would have understood it more if it was, it had said, okay.
I think originally, Cindy, they started out as a brown bag.
Okay, got it. And then, um, the landfill closure fee, thirty-six thousand.
It's closing.
We're building up a fund to close landfill, landfill.
And that's a required thing, right, Ollie, I believe?
Yeah.
So, every year that will go what? Seventy-two thousand extra?
No, there's, there's already money in a fund that we've already been given for years.
Oh, so this is another thirty-six we're just putting in it? Okay.
But we don't, it's not one of our funds. We paid the money to somebody, it's an accountant, landfill closure accountant, but we don't, we don't pass control over it.
Call it some trust fund.
Northern Trust, I believe.
Thank you.
Yeah, Northern Trust.
Northern Trust Fund. And then, is it, is it, is it these folks then?
So, they stored everything and they get the aluminums and cans and the bottles and whatever?
And we get almost a hundred thousand dollars back from CRNR for all their recycled stuff. We get a percentage. We added that to the contract with CRNR.
Okay.
Correct, Gina, we've added a hundred...
A C and D. Was it just a C and D?
C and D, and if they, okay, thank you, Ollie. But if, but recycling some of that stuff, the C and D?
Yeah, the C and D.
They're, they're separate, right? There's the construction materials and there's the pure recycling stream, that's how I understand it.
Yes.
Two separate checks we get.
Uh, we get more money, we get money from the C and D. They say we are not getting anything from, um, recycling of other products yet because it costs too much to ship it off.
Yeah, we're getting more than that.
And they give me, uh, reports on this monthly if you'd like to see them, but...
I would love to see, just wanted to understand it. Because this is part of where the CRV money comes back, isn't it?
We don't get any CRV.
We don't get any of that. Is there any reason why they don't go after that? I mean, everybody pays it. Every individual pays that when they purchase something, and then CRNR is doing that recycling, correct?
Well, they may get it, but we don't. Maybe.
Well, if they, no. If we were, it, they say they're not making any money on it because of what it costs to ship it off the island. Now, CalRecycle comes out and visits the plant at least once a, a year. And I know that we always talk about the, that tax.
So, can they bail all that? I mean, plastic is pretty bulky, but with all the plastic that's being used right now, do they, they bail that too?
They bail aluminum, they bail, they separate, just, you got to pay to get it off the island, and then it's not worth a whole bunch.
Okay. Cemetery Fund.
Next is Rydell Cemetery Trust Fund. And this is a trust fund that's been set up for quite a while. Uh, revenues are earned every year here and occasionally, we do spend the balances that we have on cemetery-related improvements.
So, this is all there is?
And this is what we, we're looking at this point to spend. We have...
Sixty-eight grand.
Sixty-eight grand.
Okay.
Available. And I understand we're putting some of the improvements on hold at the cemetery until July.
I don't think the people there care.
And the next one, what we call the Redevelopment Trust Fund, we may, we have developed reimbursement fund, we may just change that to the reimbursement fund. This has a relationship with the successor agency. At the state, you'll hear of administrative, uh, cost reimbursement. We get about two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand each every six months in one round of the ROPS. In addition, we also get some monies for permitted admin expense, which is, which you might call a pass-through from LA County. We give them two million a year. They give us back four-hundred-and-fifty thousand, and that's added. So, we're, we can spend that on admin-related items related to, excuse you, related to successor. So, you'll have Public Works here, you'll have, um, a portion of the city manager's salary, Denise's salary. You have noticing, overhead and property, property-related fees. This was all worked with, um, we worked with, um, RSG on this. Accounting-related expenditures, which we've had significant amount and continue to do so. Successor consultant is RSG. I spent a considerable amount of time looking at this as well, so a portion of, of contracts there. And we also have city attorney charges in this portion of the fund, the admin-related fund. There's additional charges in the successor side as well.
You know, when Elizabeth Hole comes and talks to us, she's the one that's in the redevelopment from BB and K.
Very broad question, Ben. Is there a plan for reconciling the earmarked salaries in this fund?
Um, as far as just showing what, what we're paying for from redevelopment or which part, sorry?
Well, some of the percentages of salaries have gone into this fund, and this money is not as available as it used to be.
Just the, the long-term use of this money, is that, is that the question? Yeah, well, we can...
So, is there a plan for reconciling those salaries? Are they going to fold into the other departments?
I don't have that, but we can, we can create that. Obviously, we need to. It's not around forever.
I mean, maybe not today, but incoming...
Just to let you know, this money is only allowed to be spent on admin expense, so we are charging as much as we can to this...
But she's just speaking to the fact that it's obviously not always going to be there.
It's not always going to be there.
It will. That we're getting two-hundred-and-fifty thousand a year for the, from successor agency, successor agency, we have, I think, I want to say up to thirty years for permitted admin expense from LA County.
Are you sure it's thirty years? Because I'm not...
It may be down to seventeen, but...
Right, I don't, I don't, I thought there was a timeline for how long we received that, so we probably need to...
Okay, my understanding was it was sooner than that, so, okay.
Does, does it grow? Is your COLA on top of that?
You know, that's a really good question. I know the attorneys are looking at what's going on with that.
It doesn't grow.
Both good questions.
Cindy, just to let you know, we did receive more money in redevelopment when it was alive and well to support staff operations, operations as well as sewer as well. So, it's definitely not there. So, that's the fun one, related to successor. The next page is Vehicle Maintenance Fund. This is an internal service fund that charges out to other funds. And as you can see below, uh, looking at getting a code enforcement vehicle for fifteen thousand dollars. Fleet Management Software. This is to help, uh, staff log in, uh, the work they do on the existing vehicles. We don't have any kind of history related to the vehicles. So, this is creating the history, the maintenance schedule, the plan, reminders. And, uh, at the end of each day, they'll enter in what vehicle they worked on and you can get ahold of expenses as well.
I don't notice a tree replacement fund.
What's that?
The tree replacement fund.
Tree replacement fund?
Replace the tree out by the garage. Last year, a mechanic got down a tree.
Oh.
It wasn't on our property.
Yes.
Oh. I don't know about this, do you?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, okay. Island Company Tree?
Yes.
Oh. Do we need to replace a tree out there?
After, no.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Um, yeah, I don't know, do, do you know what the Segway is, do we actually have that?
You know, I budgeted that, that was something that we were looking at last year to assist...
Oh, this is one of the things we're, we, we can, this was just being discussed though, right? We can just remove that?
You know, that was in last year's budget.
Not planned.
And it was removed.
Okay.
The only thing in this year's is code.
The new code vehicle. So I've got a note to myself, maybe you remember Denise, what, the old code vehicle, would, we, does it have any value? The loud one?
It won't pass a noise order.
Yeah.
Not much.
I don't know if it has any value.
Okay.
Sure, somebody would buy it.
Yeah, okay.
Off the island.
Anyway, our recommendation is to purchase that Gem vehicle that you've seen, has the one-ten charge, the white one?
I thought you said that didn't work very well. The one with the little, the little pickup truck in the back, with the little thing in the back? Oh, I thought there were some issues about its keeping its charge for a long time.
Well, any, any electric vehicle does have a, a set time until it needs a charge, but it, I mean, I think that, Dennis, do you want to speak to this one a little bit? I, I've been hearing positive on it.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear positive.
Reasonably efficient, um, that's the least we can ask.
Yeah, it's definitely efficient. That's why we brought it out for a demo. As with everything, we get different things.
Okay, like you know what, right?
This vehicle seems to work fine. Uh, there was a question about picking up large animals, but as usual, Public Works can go with the backup, uh, backup bucket and pick it up.
Does it charge better than some of the other vehicles we've had?
Yeah, it's a regular one-ten plug-in, it's very simple.
I mean, but does it stay, because they drive those things all day. I know there's been times the guys have to drive out to the, by the, the other side of town, and then they get run out of juice, and then they have to walk back into town, and that doesn't seem very efficient, so...
I didn't hear that that occurred.
Oh, okay. That wasn't a recent one, but, and it wasn't with that, that vehicle particular, in particular.
Oh, okay, well, I wonder, uh, we have now, it's not run out of power yet.
Okay.
I imagine if it was overworked, ten, twelve hours a day, then probably would.
Okay.
Perhaps, uh, plugging it at lunchtime, you know?
Right, right, okay.
But it seems to work fine. It doesn't have all the bells and whistles that we would like, but it's relatively inexpensive and maneuverable, in my opinion.
Okay. Your opinion is very important.
The next page is Avalon Municipal Hospital Fund. This is the sales tax pass-through that supports the hospital.
Helps support the hospital.
Helps support, yes, helps support. And as you can see, we also changed the overhead allocation to this particular fund. And final page, McLean Hall Putnam Trust. This is for the fire department, and they have a surplus of about sixty-five thousand dollars in there. It's contributions to the fire department, they spent it on, I think, last year of barbecue, and now some other items, I think, that have been discussed.
Their discretion, what they spent it on.
Important step.
When they started that, it was only like five grand, I think, or two grand when they first started.
Wow.
Where in, in...
Memorial to, um, for you, McLean, it was a...
Oh, okay, and then where money comes into that from?
Every year, a lot of people donate.
Oh, people donate, okay, donations.
Money, and they do that as write-off or whatever. Every year, they seem to donate up to sixty-five thousand, that's pretty good.
Do we want to go through the, um, CIP project list really quickly, or what's your pleasure, counsel?
We can.
All right, how about, if, do you have questions on them, let's start there. Do you have questions, so we don't go through every single line item. Now, some, some things we've done, we've put in priorities, if you see that, uh, I think we've cleaned up the comments, we've tightened up the expenditure amounts, and we, um, looked at, uh, the year outs as well, so. Dennis spent a lot of time with Gina on this one.
A three-minute rule. You got three minutes.
Each?
I, each line item.
Does anybody want to donate their three minutes to me?
They modified it, didn't they?
Uh, number one, is that PARSAQ required?
Uh, number one, um, not priority one, number one, yes. No.
Project number one.
That's just to keep the road there.
That was City Councilmember Sampson's number one goal. The one you're talking about is, let me see here.
Here, she's got one for you.
So that's actually not in this year, so...
Number fifteen, or my priority four, is the, um, Pevilly Beach Rock Fall, that's PARSAQ required.
Right.
And like I was saying earlier, um, we should get that out to public bid soon. And we don't anticipate spending any money in fourteen, fifteen on it.
And on two A and two B, it was just confusing. It says this goal is on hold, but then we had twenty thousand earmarked, now have fifty thousand earmarked for their...
Apologies, we, we should have cleaned up that comment, that's, that's not...
Okay, that's kind of what I thought.
No.
The comment's old, sorry.
Right, old comment, and, and you're right, fifty thousand dollars, I think, is what the council decided for...
Is now, okay.
Oops.
And then two C, this is the portable D cell, is it not?
Yes, it was.
Okay. You, you guys want me to keep going, or does anybody else have any que, okay. Um, okay, so then the... Number, project number three, um, let me just regroup. So all said and done, you've got a significant amount of five-point-nine million over a ten-year time, and doesn't seem like, it looks like it's just in placeholder, if you will. How, how do we know this is the right amount? Have you, what research have you done into this? Is there, this, is this actually part of a ten-year plan to do?
So, yes, it was, um, a plan that I performed with RBF, and we had to present it to, uh, the state in compliance with the CDO, a twenty-year financial plan. It's all itemized, listed, linear footage, square footage, manholes, it's all identified.
Great.
So buck fifty the next year, and then, buck fifty this year, and then seven-hundred-thousand for every year thereafter?
Or, uh, keep kicking the can down the road, you know, we thought we'd just space it out. Uh, we have some inflation monies in the five-point-nine, it's still, still an estimate. We've got the Avalon factor involved, you never know what's going to happen with a public bid, but I think we're close on that.
We're still thinking, uh, talk about the contractors thing, right? That would have some kind of impact on that thing.
It really would, yeah.
And we've just kicked that can down the road a little bit, right? We talked about having a fee for a contractor's fee, and I don't see it anywhere in here. Yeah, and, and I think, we're kind of missing the boat, every, each day we go by, and a contractor comes to town, or existing contractors are working, this money they ought to be thrown towards our infrastructure, and it should be a set fee for that to be achieved by every contractor.
I believe, I believe we're working on that. You won't see any costs here, because we anticipate the developer to be paying for any increase or decrease. So I don't know if that, if it would be in any budget at this point in time.
Well, and I guess the other thing I'd add is that we don't have a schedule now, but if there is any proposed development, we one-off negotiate the impact to the infrastructure. So like, for instance, the Island Company's proposed development, you know, it's been some time since we've talked with them, but we, we had questions in all those areas, and, and let them know that they were, there would be significant contributions in order to move that forward.
Yes.
But there's nothing in writing saying that we're doing that.
There, there's, there's no development agreement with them for that development, so that development's not going forward.
Right.
Until there is an agreement, it won't go forward. I just, just as a safeguard, so that you know that there, there wouldn't be any major development without some type of fees recovered, it just, it's all one-off negotiated right now, rather than having a set schedule.
I know there's a fee charge for everything, and obviously that's not working too well, because we're being in this situation, but that's why we're here, I understand.
Yeah, but I guess, but what I'm saying is, I, um, we don't have the, the, the fees set, like you're talking about, but they are one-off negotiated.
I, I get, I get.
Okay.
So I'm reminding everyone, again, and I'll be out here tomorrow.
Number five, the D cell units maintenance, what specifically is this referring to?
It costs money for the chemicals, the filters, and everything to run a D cell unit.
This is the one in the harbor?
This is the, which, which one is this?
This is, um, if we anticipated bringing one in.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry.
The new, a new portable?
Yes. Uh, you'll see two C is, well, wait a minute.
Yeah. Um, six A and six B, if I understand this correctly, this would be repair and restoration from the deck down, correct? And what we're saying with upgrade plan not available or considered herein, that means from the deck up?
Correct.
Similar to the fuel dock? Deck down, okay.
I kind of had an idea that if we put Vons on the mole, um, they could take care of all of that at once, they would get the first dead, first jab at all the visitors coming, and as they walk out, they could get their last-minute souvenirs, and they could redevelop that whole site. The freight would never have to come all the way into town.
It solves several problems all at once.
It really does, so I think we're back to the drawing board.
It would be beautiful, too, can you imagine coming in? It's like the Vons I'm seeing.
Well, depends on how they designed it. Couldn't be any uglier than what we got out there now.
It's true.
Anyway, that was a good solution, huh?
That's funny.
Down on, um, project number ten, the storm drain gates, it says private project as of November first, what, what does that mean?
Uh, go ahead, uh, city manager, would you like to...
Oh, sure, we, we have a proposal from Mr. Flynn, wherein he would fund those duckbill gates, and so I'm sending him a letter currently, Mike, if you're watching, don't worry, you'll get the letter. We, we're going to require some due diligence as part of this, and a covenant with him. The, the bottom line, and we were very candid with Mr. Flynn, this would be, you know, there can't be any implied return from the city. I mean, if he's going to provide this, that's terrific, it's a benefit to us all, um, but he's going to pay fees to go along with it, um, and, yeah, so anyway, so we're, we're negotiating and working on that now. And this, and this is so that he ultimately, and, and other people too, could have private
D cell.
D cell units, so...
Right.
But there, but there, ES is working on a discharge permit, um, and so they, they have to be, they have to be the ones signing off on all of those.
But there's other ones coming into town as we speak.
Right.
So...
We're, we're working on it now, I mean, we...
I, I know you are, but...
Is, is, there are some jurisdictions issues with, like, county health?
Not, not to my knowledge.
Okay. I mean, it's, yeah, I don't know, ES has been tasked with that whole permit, so I, I have no idea, Dave, if you're able to speak on it? We will have to probably go around and do some catch-up on those that are out there, you're right.
Yeah, there's quite a, there's new ones.
There's none out there. Thank you.
Okay. Um, eleven B, the bathometric study, uh, I know that this isn't on our tenure, it's sort of got a placeholder, but where is this, where's your thought? Where geographically?
Well, before Hurricane Marie, uh, we, we continually saw a diminishing of the beach sand next to our seawall, and we figured we'd need to bring some sand back, and we'd have to do a bathometric study. I still think it's something you should consider, we're kicking the can down the road again, that whole seawall, and right now, you can see the footing of it, so it's not very good. There's another item on here to repair seawall, that's way down the road, a few years.
Okay.
So, it was, uh, to bring, to barge some sand back to the, to the coast, or, and/or dump sand in, one of the two.
Have we talked to Army Corps?
Pardon?
We, we've talked to the congressman's office about getting his help in this area, but we've not specifically reached out to the Army Corps of Engineers, but we need to.
Item number fourteen, roadway work. I know you and I have talked extensively about some of the repairs, and it's, it's a pretty large chunk of change over five years. What part of that are fixes that Edison should be required to do? And have they, I know you've been working with them, and have they gone back, I haven't seen any real repairs, so I'm just curious.
No, they haven't, the city manager and I are currently trying to, um, meet with them and discuss.
So we're, we're looking to, to move to a new program with Edison, it's mostly Edison in town, because, you know, they, they make repairs to water primarily, and then they cold patch it, and then it sinks, and so we have a huge inventory of places around town with these sunken, um, areas, and so we want to collect a annual deposit, and then if they, if they want to go in and make it on their own, as, as good as it was before, great, if not, then we would just annually bring over a big shipment of asphalt and use that deposit to pay for that.
That's good.
So we have a whole inventory of all the bad spots in town, we're going to meet with Edison, walk them through it.
Right.
It's a little different than other places where they operate, because they don't, normally they have the, the hot asphalt, and they can make it just as good as it was before, but here, there's, I mean...
They're just compacted, right?
Right.
It should be up to the responsibility of the contractor.
But the...
That's right.
Lower Terrace is a great example, it's a brand-new road, and we've got a nice...
A week after it was put in.
Right.
In Western City, there was a way to identify repairs, like, um, you know, a thingy that gets nailed to the street, so that when it sinks, you can...
Yes, sir.
A year down the road, you can identify whose repair it was. Do we have some of that in place?
Yeah, we can.
We don't have it, but we could. These are like a pavement nail that they're using, or something like that?
Yeah, something like that, it's got a number on, the city of Avalon retired a number, we tied it in memory.
Inventory.
Whoever did it, whether it be Jordan, or whether it be the city, or whether it be Edison.
Recent issue of Western City?
It's either in a magazine or at the leak.
Okay.
Someplace.
It's a good idea.
The number fourteen, don't forget, includes some sidewalks, curbs, and gutters as well.
Which we're doing now.
We have a lot of cracked curbs and gutters.
Trippin' Falls.
Trippin' Falls. Public Works has been doing our best to keep up with it, but a lot of it needs to be repaired. Uh, we need a bunch of wheelchair ramps as well. Seems like a lot of money, two, two-point-five, but we'll eat, we'll eat that up pretty quick.
Wow.
Then I would jump down to number nineteen, modular bathrooms for the casino, there's a project amount for fifty thousand, but it's not earmarked anywhere? What were you guys thinking?
We, we think we need to identify a, a revenue stream to help pay for this, there's been talk of possibly coming to you with a proposal to have like a air refill tax or something. We, we're envisioning, that's not city property back there, it's Island Company, but it's certainly a visitor destination, as you all know, and we'd like to see, we, we've been talking to the Island Company, we'd like to see proper bathrooms out there, changing stations, washdown area, amenities for divers, and, and we're looking for some way to fund that. They, they've not been very interested in...
Digging up the street?
Well, yeah, we, we also, as part of putting in the, the bathrooms, we'd certainly have to trench over there.
Yeah, we have to trench and put a pump station and pump the sewage up.
Yeah, has to go up to the upper row, pump up to the upper row, right?
But we, we'd like to beautify that area and really make it what it should be.
There's, and we can certainly talk about this offline. There's been many, many, many discussions with the, with the dive community about the possibility of a park toll or a, you know, fundraising mechanism, and I think you would find with that community, it's very favorable.
That's why.
That there is an interest in, should they be receiving services, there would be an interest in looking at some sort of park toll.
Okay. Frankly, that's why I left it on the list, even though we didn't schedule it, so that you all remember it and consider it again.
Maybe it'd be great if we could try to get that into, at the very least, the 15-16 budget?
Yes, ma'am. You see some pretty ugly sites sometimes, a little skinned divers changing out there in the wide open.
You do what you have to do.
Oh, TMI.
Okay, so then on 20A and page three, project 70. So 20A has the city match in fiscal year 15-16, and 70 has the MTA, no, I'm sorry, not the MTA, I'm sorry, the successor agency in 14.
Number 15 and number 70.
15 and 70, I'm sorry, did I look at that? Yes, 15 and 70. Sorry, I've got two of those, so.
Yes. It's split out, successor isn't really a part of the city budget, so it's, the first year is going to be in successor. We're still determining what that amount is, and then future years will be from the general fund.
And my next one is on page two, project number 31. I just was interested in a little more information at a test site. This is a commitment to develop runoff water test facility?
Yes. I wanted to be proactive and try to find something. I believe there's some state funds out there available for treating runoff water. I was thinking maybe this spot behind City Hall, maybe a little spot up at Joe Machano Field. There's a type of astroturf and underlayment drainage system where you can capture runoff water, treat it, test it, and see what it costs you to develop new water. So it was just showing to be proactive and hoping that we might be able to do something here to satisfy some state requirements.
And maybe some of that is in that, that Prop 1 money?
Yes.
It seems like they've got, they had a bunch of different categories.
Yeah.
So you mean, talking about removing the concrete and laying this porous material in the bottom of the channels?
Yes, something like that would be, work fine.
Okay.
I don't have any specific area for it, but I'd like to consider it.
Maybe we could put a diverter in, so it diverts over the golf course?
Yes, that'd be nice.
And then project number 36, the reclaimed water project. Phase one feasibility is completed. Phase two is an engineering design and cost study. What was phase one?
Enviren.
Phase one was just feasibility studies, and then to show the different aspects of what, what can be done to incorporate either reuse, reclamation, stuff like that. It was, she actually had the.
I have a copy of the, the Nisa's as well, so, yeah.
Can I get a copy of that, please?
Yeah.
It's good reading for everyone. So, so really, there's about $30,000 right now for that study, if we use the other 20 for something else. But we can always kick it up, right, if we get, we get on the bandwagon and get things going?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Project 45, a dumping station, provides for portable waste to be disposed of more efficiently?
Yeah, that's, we're at the treatment plant right now, when they, they bring the porta potty stuff, and, or the stuff from Two Harbors, and they come over there, there's no place to dump it. We've been.
That's what we just talked about, okay.
Yeah, I'm hearing.
Okay.
Keeping the bugs alive.
Okay, wait, I just got that answered. I just got that. Just got that. That's all I have.
So.
Unless you'd like to come up with.
No, so these are, and so all of these things in 14-15, we can get done between now and June 30.
That's what we think. We, or more appropriately, we could spend this amount of money on these projects. That doesn't necessarily mean that they'll be completed, but we will spend this amount.
Right, because, okay. Because what if, what if you, you get on some of these, maybe, I mean, it's like, once we get started on something, if there's a continuation, can they be dumped if everything fell apart?
Yep, budget's a living document, we can amend it anytime.
I know, but, I know, but you start doing a work on a project, and you're planning on being up over three or four years, and then you go, hell, we don't have any money. So now we've done one of five, 10 phases, and we have no money. Are there things that if you start them and stopped them, they would be, we'd just been wasting that money? Know what I mean?
We, I would hope that we wouldn't embark on projects where we have to abandon them. We, we would.
Well, yeah.
But, no, but, no.
I know, I hear you.
But we, we would, you know, is, is there some mechanism to require the funding? No, because I guess councils could change, and you certainly could get midstream through something, and if, you had different folks that were elected that didn't share that vision, that's certainly possible.
Yeah, yeah, but.
I mean, I don't know if you have anything you wanna add on, on that? I don't.
I just.
No.
Is there, is there a particular project mayor that you were concerned about that was multi-year that you were worried about?
Okay, so, let's just say, commitment to develop runoff water test facility. Okay, so first year we go, okay, we got $18,000. Second year, we got $10,000. Third year, we got nothing. So where is that project when we don't have the money over the, I mean, the project stops and it just sits there like the reclaimed water pipes that are under the ground already? That's what happens? You know, you know what I mean?
I see. So, so, okay, I understand where you're coming from.
But, you know, we're working on Catherine.
So with something like, like a test facility, then the, the logical progression would be you develop some type of runoff test site, and you determine how you could then, based on what you learned from that test, implement something like that large scale. So maybe that means that you design your roadways in the future so that they have swales, and those go to integrated storm drains, and those storm drains filter down through for water to be reused. I mean, you have some type of integrated plant, but you, the, the test site would probably have a, a logical beginning and end, because you would gather what you needed to know, and then you would no longer need to perpetuate a test site every year going forward.
Right, okay.
Using that one as an, as an example.
Okay.
Like, that when we saw porous bricks that you can pave with, and so the water.
There you go.
Right, yes.
You do 10 square feet of that, it works.
Yes.
Okay. But the next year, we don't have any more money, so we just don't put more favors in.
And then maybe we, so we, I guess, just to beat it to death, we develop some practices based upon what we've learned, and those would become part of our standard procedure.
Yeah, okay, okay. Good job going through these capital improvements, Miss Cindy.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay. So the only thing we did was add $30,000?
We added.
Or, how much did we add?
Let's see.
Well, the swimming pool, the.
Swimming pool.
Water-related expertise and additional $30,000 to $50,000.
Right.
And then.
And grand for pool.
And the pool.
And the pool, for $4,000. And a couple of adjustments by Brian.
Dennis, let me ask a question. Do we have spare cyclone fencing up at City Hall?
Do we have cyclone fencing?
Uh-huh, that we're not using?
Snow fencing?
Cyclone fencing, I, I thought it was like chain link, is that what?
Yeah, is that what they call that? Yeah.
Chain link fencing?
Uh-huh.
Do we have it here?
Do we have extra, the stuff we don't use?
Oh, we got a little bit in the warehouse.
Just a little bit? Okay.
Yeah.
Never mind.
But there was snow fencing down.
Well, I was thinking about a dog park, and if so, we needed some cyclone fencing if we wanted to, to perhaps put something up at the field of dreams, since it's not gonna have water on it for how long, however long, and I know there's a desire for a dog park, and I thought if we had cyclone fencing, we could build a dog park, 'cause you've got two sides already there. It would just be a matter of making a box up. It was just a thought.
Okay.
I know, so we could.
Cat park next to it.
That's already there.
And deer park?
Deer park.
Fox park. Okay.
I did pass out general fund revenue summary. Not sure if you have the bandwidth for that. It's rather straightforward, your basic property taxes, sales tax. What I did wanna mention is, we will be back at mid-year to revise and adjust, and have you see what's come out of the financial system. Property tax is one area that I'm, I'm just a little concerned with. I'm working with HDL on to see what's happened. We are looking, HDL is seeing that we're going to have reduced property tax, but not as much, not as reduced as you see here at $132,000 received. So I'll be working with Chris on seeing what's actually in our sales tax bucket, what's happened there. But I look forward to coming back with you, to you, and maybe individually showing you some of the property tax information. It's really interesting what, how we get that money, and why it's so small for a city our size.
We don't get all of it.
We don't get all of it. Millions go to successor agency and to County of LA.
And the schools.
And the schools.
Do you have a harbor revenue summary?
Okay.
Harbor revenue summary?
I do.
You do?
Can I get that as well, please?
Yes, definitely.
Cool.
Thank you very much.
And staff has basically gone through the building fees, recreation fees, and it's, we had a one-time purchase last year of $691,000, excuse me, sale of land last year. So that helped us considerably.
Mm-hmm.
And we also had some pass-throughs through the successor agency, one-time monies to the general fund. So once this kind of bouncing ball slows a little bit, and you get a sense of where it's going to be, we'll come back to you with mid-year and show you some updates.
And Ben, going forward, when do we have to schedule a 218 hearing?
What's our timeline, Denise? Do you remember?
We're gonna start approaching you on that in January. We have it all laid out for you, Ole.
We're anxious on that one, too. Yep.
So, can I throw some other stuff out here?
Yes.
The museum and the Trailhead project are gonna be starting, or may start it, I guess. And the staging, I'm very curious about the staging area for those projects, because we seem to donate our land for every kind of project, and I think that practice needs, in my opinion, the practice needs to stop. We should be generating some kind of income from that, so when that field is available again, we have some funds, or we can do some other things. I don't know how we establish that, and I don't know if that's the desire of the council, but that along with road use fees for the heavy equipment, so those are two things I'd like to bring up, and, and in knowing that, knowing if we wanted to go forward, what the process is, how long those processes take, I'm just gonna spew out some other things. The, the CUPs, we, no, I'm sorry. Well, yes, the CUPs, how are we doing on, moving forward on that, because we were looking at those fees setting up, you know, if they wanted to keep, if you could give us a status report on that, because one of the things was looking at what we were gonna charge these people if they wanted to keep their permit alive, but not really generate any money.
Right.
That, that's, that could be a huge generator of funds. The other thing, and Cindy brought it up when we were talking to CUPs that day, and it's, and that's been on my cross now, is on the business licenses for the year-round rentals, that we create a, a fee for home inspections, and the city of, oh, man, I, I ran it off. There's a city that, there's cities that are doing it, but the city of Covina has that process intact. We could either hire somebody, or we could train people to do it, because you can take them over for a certification course. This does talk about the highs and lows of doing those kinds of things, but to me, and I don't know how we would do that, I hate to think everything's gonna have to wait till 2016. So, I mean, to me, if it's holding off the, when you pay for a business license until March, so that we can get the process going, or whatever, it's just, we're, we're at such a weird time that some of these, not only are they revenue generators, but they're also a way to improve the quality of life for the residents. So, so I don't know if you all want them to proceed. I can't give direction.
You're right. We have a number of follow-up items, particularly from that CUP session that we need to get back to.
Right, right.
And frankly, the, the Vons project has kind of taken up a lot of our focus in that area of the house, but we, we will shortly get back on that, because we wanna move forward to that, too.
But I'm just wondering if it's possible to.
Yes.
Think about not having to wait to 2016 to get things to happen, and if it means delaying a business license or whatever. I mean, we delayed the leases, so I, this is the least, yeah, go ahead.
I would almost recommend, is, as difficult as it may be, to pull some of these requests or ideas from the meetings and put them on the matrix.
Mm-hmm, sure.
Whether they have any movement month to month, at least they're on there, so at least we can.
Yep.
We can see that they're still in status.
Mm-hmm.
Does that?
Sure.
That would help, I think, both you and I with some of the things we're looking for.
Right, right. And can we discuss the staging areas for, 'cause I don't, I don't know if they've already gone to Dennis to say, where are we gonna stage all this materials for, for the museum and for the Vons? Only, my God, if we, if that place will be.
Well, we, we have, I mean, we got, basically, we're in a $5 a square foot that we adopted for other leases, so if you come up with, use a $5 per square foot for a short-term lease, we're at $4.
Four, what if you have four? Well, I guess, I mean, it, it would be sub-leased, right? I mean, we don't.
We're not doing that property?
Right.
And then we have.
Right, so, I think, I think one of the first things that I wanna look at is, are allowed uses on that? I don't know what is and isn't allowed. I do know that they have come to us, the Island Company, with some concerns in the past about what we had up there, so I, that's where it probably should start.
You mean in terms of equipment?
Mm-hmm.
It would be really nice if it was a field again.
Oh, and this would be a way to generate some money to turn it in, to help turn it into a field again.
With following on the mayor's suggestion.
Yes, sir.
We have a bunch of construction encroachment permits down there that are taking up a significant amount of our property, and maybe we could have an encroachment fee that would, A, speed the contractor up to get his job done and get an encroaching, and B, have a little revenue stream.
Mm-hmm. And have we discussed in the past some kind of a road tax with all of this heavy equipment that's going over our streets?
Yes.
And we just.
It might have been prior to you, Ben, but we, yes, there's been some talk, and I could show you what we've done.
Okay.
I'd like to review that again. Also, 'cause I'm not sure when, okay, the vehicle permits. So if we wanted to say, okay, we wanna increase vehicle permits, I'm just throwing this out there.
The dollar amount, mayor, or the number of them?
Dollar.
Okay. I was like, what are you talking about?
We're doubling the number of vehicles on the rent, because we can get more permitting. No, no. Let's say we wanted to increase it, but when do we do these? Is there any time we want?
So those don't go normally with the fee schedule, do they? When do we normally do vehicle?
Near the fiscal year, I'm sorry if I'm wrong. And then we bring the fee schedule to you, it has to be properly posted in the paper.
Yes, it's with the fee schedule.
We have two, two public hearings on the fees.
Oh, and we did that just recently.
But mayor, we are gonna come forward to you with some new fees that we have to start charging, and we're just trying to get the correct amount. It's for the new FOG program that's being, we've already done the first part of it, now we're zooming in on the second part of it, and I think some of the department heads, some of them have some fees they also want to add, so you could make some recommendation to us, mayor, and we'll put that on there.
Well, one of the things that I wanna look at is the conservancy commercial permits, if you would put that on there.
And you'll talk to us about?
Yes, yes. And I'm really disappointed to see we only make $50 on dog, dog licenses? Was that the revenue, $50 on dog licenses?
Bike licenses.
Oh, that was bike, not.
Yeah, dogs are $5,000.
I'm illegal, I gotta get legal with my, I don't.
We can go out and. We can go out and steal it now because-
Is there, is it a requirement to have a bike license?
I think the municipal code says it's required, I think it does.
We used to do it. Unenforced. Um, can I ask one question about one of the fee, one of the fees? The franchise fee?
Edison?
Edison.
Well, and, is the, where's the cable franchise fee?
I don't believe they fell under that, that's a good question, and no, there isn't one.
What was the question, oh, sorry? The cable TV franchise fee?
Oh, cable franchise fee.
Five percent. It used to be five percent.
And what about the shoreboat franchise fee?
It'd be in the harbor.
Harbor, be mine.
They get all the good stuff.
If I recall, it, it did not apply. I've had this conversation before last year.
Did not apply?
Did not apply to Catalina Broadband or the company prior to Catalina Broadband. So it's, I'll get the detail from that.
The, the original franchise had a five, five percent franchise fee?
Yeah, I did, I thought that we had a franchise fee from Catalina Broadband, I thought we did receive that, no?
No, I'll, I'll check on the history.
Hmm. Okay, we'll follow on both those.
You might, you might check what the term of the original franchise was. It's not midnight, Annie.
What?
It's not midnight.
I know, so good, I'm going to keep going. Um, pest abatement, because we have yellow jackets, birds, and rats now, and...
Where is, where is this going?
Well-
We do rat divertment now, we just diversion, we know where they would need to go and we send them down there and-
Well, and deer and everything else. So, can we come up, maybe consider some kind of, uh, I don't know what you want to call it, uh, a pest abatement fee, tax, whatever you call them, where, where everybody, and, and-
A rat tax?
One of the places, what?
Is it a rat tax?
Yeah. I mean, it could be adding fifty cents to the price of a boat ticket, so everybody that comes to the island is paying for it.
You can't do that. The money's got to stay in the harbor.
Well, we got rats in the harbor, we got-
Now, you, you could eliminate the rats in the harbor, you can-
We got everything I'm talking about, we got yellow jackets, birds and rats in the-
Yellow jackets all over the town.
Okay, so, that'll just, but we'll just pay for them there. We, we put those traps not only in town, but out of town so they don't come into town.
I, I realize that, but you can't use harbor funds to fund stuff outside of the harbor. It's got to be inside the harbor.
I think they're already doing the bee stuff.
Well, we are paying for that, but why don't we get reimbursed for that through some kind of tax?
I think one thing that we might want to look, look at as a community, and the chamber has talked about this, are these business improvement districts or tourism improvement districts, because then you can designate geographic areas and, and those that are in that area can determine what they want to tax on themselves to provide those types of services. I, I worry a little bit about, um, overtaxing folks here.
The visitors?
Yeah, and all, well, also-
Local levels, too.
Yeah, residents, I mean, we, we have so many fees and taxes, I just-
Well, if it was ten cents and you have, and you have a million visitors plus however many times, that's, what's a million times ten cents?
Hundred grand.
Hundred grand.
Hundred grand, that'd pay for, that would abate all of those things for ten cents.
I think we also have future discussions with the chamber, we never know there's a possibility there.
Right. So the, the next meeting, Jim's coming down to introduce himself, I think that there's, I, I don't know, I think that we have a lot of, there's an appetite on the chamber board that I've seen for these type of districts, I think that's something we should talk about.
For bees, yellow jackets and rats.
No, for the-
Tourism improvement districts.
The community, yeah.
But it also goes into your discussion about the dive park and an entry fee there, or, you know.
Yeah.
Having little areas, those who want to use them the most or, or that own the area be the ones that are-
Yeah, I understand.
I think a lot of people would pay, I think you're right, a couple, a nominal charge that go into the dive park, I mean-
That's all I have for now.
Cool.
Oh, no, but, but this doesn't mean we're adopting this thing right now, right? We're just talking, so what's the next step?
Okay, so this is going to-
More fun than this.
Yeah, what, what we're hopeful for is that, um, we'll have a brief discussion about the budget at your next meeting, because we, we spent the time to go through it at this study session and, and, you know, we, we'll certainly be prepared to answer questions from the public, of course, but, uh, we're hoping that, you know, we'll, we'll give you a, a presentation, some of the headlines, there'll be a budget message that we, we deliver, and then you'll adopt your budget.
So where does it come in when I want to say things like, um, and I, if the sheet is here to show, for example, what we're projecting we're spending the rest of this year, oh, see, it's so confusing because we're still in this year.
We'll, we'll have a presentation to the public, we'll see what we're doing.
You know, okay, so, so for example, if I want to say, okay, what are we doing, because I think you know, well, maybe that, some of us want to say, let's look at our attorney's fees, and what have you done in this year existing to minim, you know, to, from last year, because you have last year's numbers, correct? So from last year to this year, how much less we're spending, let's say, an attorney's fee?
Some highlights, some bullet points.
Yeah, we, we could certainly show you, here's, here's what you spent last year, here's what we're opposing you spend this year.
And then consultant and succession plans, you know, what you're thinking, what, what are you, and, I mean, yes, you put a budget there, but what, let me just ask, so, so if you say, this is this cost because he's going to be here through June thirty, and we, and I'm just, this is so hypothetical, okay, but we say, no, we think he's done, he can leave February first, and then you probably go, yee-haw, no, and then he, and then, but we know we have to replace somebody. So, so I'm curious, your succession plan and, and what, what we're, and what you really want them to do for the rest of this fiscal year? What are the tasks of Gina, what are the tasks of Chris?
I see that as separate from your next step. What, what I'm seeing you're doing next is simply adopting the budget. I, I saw that as a goal that you guys provided to me in my evaluation, and I, and I'm going to deliver that. In fact, I hope you don't mind, I shared the goals that you provided with, with the department head so that they would know the things I need to work on.
I thought those were confidential.
Because I'm obviously leaning on them for that. So we will come back to you on all those items.
Okay.
Succession planning, once I talked to everybody down from the rooftops when I didn't, a lot of them got scared when they saw that because they thought, oh, it's a worry.
Okay, okay.
But, but I explained, you know, the, the future and, you know, what the timeline was for things and so forth.
Yeah, okay, good.
But I think, Annie, what you're asking for is a good, is good point, and, um, I think if you spent a few minutes maybe with Gina before next Tuesday and Gina, in your presentation, she can list out some of those. I know I have a couple of things that I'd like, just free to touch on for the public with, with changes in the budget this year versus last year and where we're going, so maybe we could just do that and then it's all-
Okay.
-ready, rather than continue the conversation.
Right, okay.
And do we have any PowerPoint people? Because it'd be nice to do some nice pie charts and stuff like that for-
And Gina's very proficient in PowerPoint.
That's the plan.
Revenue presenting, so.
Yeah, we're, we're planning on doing a, a little dog and pony show, in case you're, we're just, you know.
With cookies.
Counselor member Olson, the franchise fees, I just checked, yes, Island Enterprises and Catalina Broadband, they do pay franchise fees and it goes in the franchise fees account. So that would go in, I guess, with the Edison.
Do you know the amount on that one, there's?
I don't, not offhand, but we do collect from those other two sources in that account.
Island Enterprises, that's a shoreboat franchise, hopefully that'll go in the harbor.
I've got to.
But that one account.